All right, we're returning to open session following an executive session. And the first thing is public input, and there's a lot of public here today. Is there anyone that would like to speak? And if it's about Charles E. Jones, we do have you on the agenda.
Do you want to hear from them now or on the agenda item?
Well, I was going to do the student report if there's no other public input first. Okay, seeing none. Nick O'Connell.
Hi there. My name is Nick O'Connell. I'm a senior here at the high school. And bear with me because this is my first student report, but I'm very excited and I hope I do a very good job. And I, my role, as I've been told, is to provide a, an outlook of life at the high school from a student perspective and to really highlight all the good things that happened at the high school because it's not just a building for learning. There's a lot of other things that, a lot of other great things that happened here. So I'm here to highlight some of those things. Among those are academic, fine arts, athletics, and then some other things that, as a committee, we found important that we would like to share. So just starting with notable academic matters that are going on at the high school. Our deadline for clubs and extracurricular activities is the 30th, which is this week. So that deadline to sign up for your clubs, any extracurricular activities that you want to participate in at the high school, which is a great opportunity to get involved and really make a difference in the school. That deadline is the 30th, so that's coming up. Our PSATs, which is the, a pre-test for the SAT for students, not necessarily seniors, but the underclassmen and maybe some juniors that are looking to prepare for the SATs, those are October 14th. It's in the middle of the week, I believe it's a Wednesday. So that's a great opportunity for students to get prepared for this big, big, big test that is really determinate for high, for college. And lastly, for academic matters, our senior college planning night is this Thursday, October 1st, at 6:30 PM. Our guidance department does a great, great job of preparing students for the next level of learning. So this is a great opportunity for students and parents to be able to plan everything out, lay everything out, and see what the next steps are. And so that, once again, is Thursday, October 1st, at 6:30 PM for students and parents. Now transitioning to our notable fine arts matters, our, our Christmas, our winter play this year is going to be The Christmas Story. So auditions for that have been taking place and will be taking place as the weeks progress. And I'm very excited to see that. I remember watching that movie as a kid and it's, it's a great story and I think it's, they always put on great shows here at the high school, so I'm very excited to see what they can do. And then just a reminder, our open house and ribbon cutting ceremony for the new middle school, which looks fabulous, is this Wednesday, September 30th, at 6:30 PM. And that relates to fine arts because our fantastic musical group, Notorious, is performing. And if you haven't seen them perform, I would definitely recommend going to see them. They always put on a great show and it's really fantastic to listen to. And other musical groups as well will be performing, but Notorious is, is a big deal. They're, they're notorious around the high school, in a good way. Now to athletic matters. I think going into this year, our fall sports teams are carrying the load for the, for the athletics for the, for the year. We have a lot of great talent athletically in the school and a lot of great teams. And just to highlight that, our boy soccer team, Boy Soccer Varsity, who is actually playing right now on the turf, I believe they're winning, as I was pulling in, which is nice. Their record is one, two, and two, but they've lost a couple of key starters to injury. They're hoping to get them back, but that record, once again, does, does not, is not indicative of how their season has been because they're a very, very good team, very well-coached. Girl soccer is three, one, and one. So the, so the ladies are carrying, picking up the boys', their, their part. They've had some big, big wins at Linfield, or home against Linfield and at Newburyport. And I don't, I don't know if we all know, but they went very far in the, in the state tournament last year and they hope to make a big, big run again this year, so it's very exciting. The football team is three and oh, which is very exciting. They're undefeated. There's a big game at home this Friday against Mascanomic High School, and that's a big, big game in terms, in terms of playoff picture. So hopefully that, they can get a win there. Our boys, boys and girls golf, golf team is doing very well. They have, they have two of the best players in the entire conference that they play in, so that's very exciting. They're also very well-coached. Our boys and girls cross-country teams are also doing very well. If, if you can tell the theme, all, all of our teams are doing very well. They, their meets are usually on Wednesdays and they're doing very well. Once again, very well-coached. Our field hockey team is, was playing earlier this, today. They're two and three, but once again, that record is not indicative of their season. They're very, they're a very good team. They have great leadership, great senior leadership. So they're doing very well. Our girls and boys volleyball team is playing, I believe, right now. I don't know if that match is over, but they're two and three. Once again, not indicative of how their season has been. They've had some very big wins to end last week that has really turned their team around, turned the season around and gave them some positive outlook on the future. So to transition to some other important aspects worth noting, our student council elections for the class of 2019, which is crazy, coming from a 1997 birth, that's very crazy, 2019. Also with that, class officer elections for the class of 2019 are, are also, have also taken place on Friday. And it's, it's interesting with, in today's day and age, the technology, it's no, well, it is handwritten ballots, but this year, our power blocks, every, all, all students went to their freshman, to their power blocks and voted by watching speeches on their boards, like the, like a smart board, where they watched the speeches of students, prospective students that were applying for these positions. They were able to watch the speeches that these students made, which was very cool to see. That's a new concept that they were trying this year and I think it went very well. The results are to be determined because they're, they still have to count everything out, but they're working very, very hard to determine who won that, won each respective election. And then finally, our food drive, which is always a huge, huge event for the month of October, which is run by our student council, is going on throughout the month of October. Their goal is 5,000 items. They have exceeded that several times in the past and they hope to do the same this year. It's, it's a great, great program and all the, all the benefits go to the North Reading Food Pantry. So it's a really great event to give back to the community and, and you can see the whole, the whole student body and teachers get involved. I believe the, the winning power block gets a pizza party, so there's incentive there to, to give back. So that is it for the student report. I also have a student work report and I, talking with Mr. Bernard as we had our meeting today, I thought it was necessary, or I thought, I thought it would be a good idea to share a personal, personal essay or college essay that we're working on in our English courses as seniors, because obviously college is looming, secondary education is looming, so it's, it's very important to be able to plan out the process. And the essay is such a key component for your common application and even your supplements. So I, I can pass this around, but I, I'll go over it before I do. I don't, if you're not familiar, there's the Common Application, which provides you with information about, you have to provide information about yourself, but the key, key component of that is the essay, which you write. There's five prompts that you get to choose from and you write up to 650 words, which is not a lot, but if you put the, put the effort in, it can become a really good piece. So in our senior English courses, we've been going through the process of creating an outline of, of what prompt we might want to write about, creating a rough draft, and then finally having this final draft, which is great. It's great practice of time management skills because it is rapidly approaching and if you don't get, get on top of it, it's here before you know it and you, you need to have a good essay. So I will pass this around. One of my own, my, my own essay that I've been working on, just to give you kind of the following guidelines of how it is graded. Addressing the prompt is obviously a very important component. If it didn't address the prompt, wouldn't get you into college. So it's thoroughly and precisely responding to all aspects of the, of the prompt. And then content, your essay is sophisticated, insightful, uses relevant and meaningful examples throughout, which is very important. Creativity, your essay is memorable, free from cliches, and portrays the writer as an individual, which is very important. You want to be your own self and, and not be generic, have a very personalized and individual essay. And finally, style and grammar. You want to have grammar, grammar, no grammar errors and no errors in spelling or punctuation because that's very important. You want, you want your essay to seem professional. And then style, writing is smooth, it shows your unique voice and who you are, because I think that's very important when, when writing something about yourself, is to be yourself and not be someone that you're not. So I can pass this student work example around. It's just, this, this is the outline, this isn't, it's not broken up into paragraphs or anything, but, so I passed this into my English teacher and, and she read it over with me. This is Mrs. Hargrove, who teaches contemporary dramatic literature. And she went over it with me and circled some things and you can read the comments, but it's very important to be able to, so I submitted this outline. Mrs. Hargrove looked over it. Now I go back and make, make my own revisions and then come back, which is actually tomorrow, with, with a, with a rough draft of this prompt. So it's very exciting. It's a cool process to be able to work on it in school and out of school. So I'll pass, pass this around.
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem. But I think that's, that's it for me. I will be back at some point.
You will.
And it will be better than this.
Nice job, Nick. You did great. Very well. I, I just, one quick question and a comment.
Sure, absolutely.
Do you think you can beat Masco Friday night?
Absolutely.
You sure?
I don't want to pull Joe Namath, but I think we can.
Okay, all right. And my comment is, I think that was one of the best student reports I've heard in the 16 years I've been here. Congratulations. Excellent job.
Thank you very much.
I'm just really happy to have the students back. The summer is lonely when the students aren't here, because they do add life and a different perspective that we don't get with the old people and almost all.
And, and for your first report, this is unusual to have an audience of this size.
Right.
That was great. Usually there's thousands of people watching at home, but we don't have many people here live in the studio.
Hopefully by word of mouth, this will be packed next time, so.
Every football season, it's us and the football game that gets the top ratings in North Reading. So you probably got at least a thousand viewers tonight. I think Jerry's right.
It's very important to beat, beat Masco.
Absolutely.
Very important.
I'm, I'm very excited, so.
And just one piece of advice, your first time here, get the hell out of here as quickly as possible.
I told you, Nick.
I can, I can have Mr. Bernard.
I can bring, you need it tonight to do the edits or?
No, no, I have it online.
I'll get it to you in the morning.
Okay, awesome.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Nick.
Have a good night.
All right. We're going to go out of sync just a little bit to bring forward the public input side of naming part of the facility after a person. Is there anyone that wants to take the lead on? Okay.
Oh, before you do that, I want to ask if, do you want to get a microphone out there or take this one right here?
Okay.
No.
This one?
Yeah, that one, yeah. Because those are connected to the cable, the NorCam thing.
First of all, I'd like to thank the committee for putting this on the agenda. As a lot of people in this room know, and some of you folks know, a year ago to a year and a half ago, there was a groundswell of support for naming the junior, the middle school after Charlie Jones. There was over a thousand signatures that were on an online ballot. A lot of comments that were made about him in supporting this and the board was very gracious in, in listening to those. But after listening to input from the, the legal team, it was understood that the naming of any facilities would be certainly up to the school committee and not up to town meeting. So we had a warrant out there to go ahead and vote on naming the school after Charlie. But upon listening to your input, it was decided that we would rescind that warrant and not put it in town meeting. And it made, to me, it made a lot of sense and to everybody else, it made a lot of sense. However, there was some great input by a lot of the folks who are sitting here in front of me right now, that, you know, probably something should be done for Charlie. And one of the things that was brought up was possibly naming Main Street the Charles E. Jones Way. It would obviously have a double meaning, that the fact that it was a way, a street, and then also we could put a plaque up there and recognition as to what the Charles, what, what Charlie's way was, how he prepared kids for life after school. So I thought that was a great idea a year ago and I really got to extend some personal appreciation to Mr. Venezia for bringing this up on his own a couple of weeks ago in front of the committee, as was promised, that, you know, that, that would happen. And I was lucky enough to get a tour of the new facilities from Mr. Bernard last week and we had a chance to walk around and, you know, the more I look at that, that area, the more I think it would be a great recognition for Charlie Jones to name that the Charles E. Jones Way. So that's my input.
Anybody else?
Well, let's hear from somebody else. I knew you couldn't sit there very long.
I do want to commend the school committee for taking a serious look at this. I know when this was first brought up, it probably came in from left field and people may not have been prepared, but the school committee took the time to give it a thorough thought. I guess I should wait.
We don't want to miss any words here.
I usually don't need a microphone.
Just ask Kathy. But again, thank you for, for all the thought and the effort that you put into getting us to, to this point here. And without spending a ton of time on why we think Charlie would deserve an honor like this, you know, we've had numerous great educators through the system over the years and we've had people like Ms. Dell do a great contribution to the school and to the, to the system and, but I think overall, with all the dedication that Charlie's put into this, year after year, 30-plus years of putting on this trip and helping young people prepare for that trip and the life lessons that he helped teach through that process, I think he kind of did raise to the top a little bit above maybe others for this sort of honor. And if it's chosen, then it's Main Street or whatever the final decision is. But again, Charlie, I think, set himself apart with the effort that he took to put that summer trip on and then all the preparation that it, that it took to get the young people there. In talking to one of the young people tonight, my daughter, when they FaceTimed with our grandson, talked about it just on what a great experience it was, a life learning experience, a life memory experience. And I know that goes through 30-plus years of putting this trip on for numerous kids. I don't know what the final number would be, but it's well over thousands of kids that would have had that great experience. And again, truly, this wouldn't have happened without one man stepping up and making it happen. And then rallying families and, and the community around it to support it and such. And along the way, he's done many other things, but I think this is probably the one event, the one thing that Charlie has done in his career, along with his teaching skills, that set him apart. And again, I think strong consideration should be made for, for Charlie and naming Main Street after him. So, thank you.
If there's anybody there who doesn't know who I am, I'm almost a townie. I wasn't born here, but my children all went to school, starting in kindergarten in the North Reading Public Schools. I was the school psychologist for almost all of my personal career. So I've been here, I've seen all kinds of kids. Way back in, I think, 1982 was the first time that my husband and I joined Charlie on a camping trip. This was back when it was the junior high, not the middle school. And it was, I was familiar with camping, but not familiar with camping with so many people. But I just was so impressed with Charlie's organization. You could tell his military background. There was no question about who was in charge. But the students already knew that from being in class with him. And yet, he was warm and caring enough to be able to joke and to encourage his students. He did a wonderful job in school. And the biggest drawback for his early times was because he was principal, he could only do one class, so it was the higher level history class. If you wanted to be a chaperone on Charlie's summer trips, and I don't know if he continued it forever, you had to be able to recite the Gettysburg Address if you were going in that direction. Anyplace you were going, you had, as part of signing up, to say that you wanted to go on this trip. You had to do some studying and learn something about it and be able to take a pop quiz at a moment's notice. I did pass. Larry and I stayed every year camping with Charlie and his crew from 1982 to 2003. Sometimes Larry and I went together, sometimes we traded halfway through, if it was a real long thing, because we did have children at home. And we could tell that if there was a party at home, because the house would be cleaner when we got back. But Charlie was wonderful with all these kids. He taught them lots of daily living skills that they did not have. He taught them how to manage their money, at least early on. They were limited to what size suitcase they could take, how much money they could take with them to spend on their own. He engaged them in votes when, for example, they were supposed to be outside doing something and it was pouring rain, you know? Do we want to spend this money going, going out to eat instead? Or here's three options that we could do instead? And they would vote. They all learned skills they didn't have before. It was nice that there was always one or two who, before the initial camping trip, because there was learning to set things up and take them down in Charlie's backyard, there were some people who actually knew how to do those things, who knew how to fix broken tent poles. And it wasn't necessarily, I'm not just talking about the grownups, it was the kids who learned those things. Also changed the pecking order of some kids in their peer group. Those who might not have been very good at rote memory, suddenly moved up ahead of some of their classmates because they knew how to do real-life things. And that was just an enormous gift that he gave to all of them. I could go on and on with funny stories about camping trips all these years. And I did bring just one, one folder of pictures from 2003 to, not 2000, to 1983 to 1985. But our, our last, Larry's last camping trip, because I was recovering from cancer at the time, but Larry's last trip was 2003, I think. I think that his presence has just been wonderful for all the students who ever had him. And I'm delighted that you're considering giving him some honor in some way or another, in, in a plaque, in a, in a street rename, whatever. He really stood above the crowd. Thank you. And a few people would like to look at these pictures. I can drop them off to you. In fact, I'll walk up with them now.
What, me?
Okay. Okay, my little child will take it up.
Get the microphone.
Following up on something that your student representative mentioned tonight, he talked about time management and learning and doing the college applications, et cetera. And one of the most important things these kids learned was time management, because they had a lot of work to do to learn and prepare for the trip, they had their schoolwork to keep up with, and then when they got on the trip, they had a whole lot of activities and jobs and cooperation to learn. They learned a lot of things about being independent and they learned their own strengths. And it was probably for many of them, the first time that they had separated that much. Granted, there were parents that they knew probably on the trip or whatever, but this was a big deal for those young kids to be separate. And it gave them a lot of self-worth and strength information about themselves. And the other thing is, if there were a thousand kids on the trip, but there were 500 college essays about the trip, or more, it was a great gift that he gave to our kids.
My children, I'm Jerry Palowski there. I have three sons that went through North Reading Schools. They're all doing very well, thank you, North Reading School System. They had many wonderful teachers. They did not have the privilege of having Charlie Jones as a teacher. He had already retired by the time they went through the system. But Ms. Brown had taken over the trip and Charlie went along and he had a profound, profound influence on my children and all the children that were on those trips. Pretty much everything everyone had said, but one of the main things was, he really taught kids their value. Some kids weren't really aware of what they had to give other people, because you're, you're in your family or you're in your little social groups or your sports teams and you might be a good goalie or you might have other things, but he really could find the value in every child and he made sure they knew that before they left. He, he just is, is an extraordinary man and even now, my children are 27, 25, and 22, they still write him a Christmas card every year. My middle son, who is in law school, talked to him for a long time before he made the decision to go to law school. Charlie had recommended he take a year off. He followed his advice and still decided he wanted to go to law school. So he had a profound influence. My children came to their graduation parties, a very important person in their lives and will continue to be. And I know that's just my experience and I just see that rippling out many, many, many years' worth. So I think it would be wonderful if you could find a way to name some part of the school after Charlie.
I can't believe that I'm going to speak, but I'm going to speak. My name is Claudia Brown.
You should have not spoken.
Believe me, Jerry, it's difficult. It's been so difficult. My name is Claudia Brown and I am a proud teacher at North Reading High School and was a resident of North Reading for 25 years. The one thing that I just want to say is that Charlie Jones made all of us who encountered him better than we thought we were. He made us better. He made us rise up to be our best selves. And that best self I bring into my classroom every day at this school, this beautiful school. And I thank him for showing me that way. And I thank him for showing so many children and so many families in North Reading that way. He made us better. He made us see ourselves better than we thought we were. Thanks very much for considering this beautiful honor.
Hi, I'm Jeanelle Rogers. I went on the trip in 2004 and I just want to say how he impacted me in the fact that he showed us a part of the country that I would never get to see normally and it created a huge opportunity for me to be able to go hiking and I still camp every year to this day, 10 years later. And I want to go back out west. I've been back out to California, out in like the Trinity Elp area, which I didn't get to see while I was out there. And I just want to keep adding things to that list of places that I've been purely because of this trip. I was out there when I was 14, I'm 25 now, and I still talk about that trip to this day. I talk, when I talk about traveling, I always talk about all the places that we've been and we were in the Grand Canyon and everything like that. People are amazed that this is even something off- People are amazed that this is even something offered at our school because there's only so many museums you can go to and there's only so many textbooks you can read. But being out there on that trip, I still can remember most of the Gettysburg Address. 15, how many years later? But we're still, both of us were on the trip and we both still have friends that we actually met on the trip. We were all staying in classes with them before, but we became friends on the trip. And here we are, 25 years old and we all still hang out on a daily basis. So it's nice to have those friendships and those memories to look back on, all because of Charlie. So, thank you.
I guess I'll just add to that. So I'm Danielle's twin sister. So we went together again in 2004. And we had the opportunity, my dad also was a chaperone throughout the whole trip. And I think just my biggest memory is, well, from Charlie is from start to finish. He was a huge impact on my life, my education, the whole process. I think just brought us together as a grade, as a community, as North Reading. We were just very present. Everyone knew the hiking hornets and everyone just knew. It brought us together as a community, as a grade. I think our grade actually clicked more when we came home. It was just a great learning experience. Again, like we both go hiking and camping all the time and we love to travel. And I think that's a huge part in anyone's education. I think everyone should be allowed the opportunity to travel. You learn a great deal. So I have him to thank for that. So it would be a great honor.
Anyone else?
Do you want to talk about the process?
Yeah.
Because I think we can bypass that process.
I just wanted to echo what everybody's already said. Apparently, I was one of the few parents that got rejected as a chaperone.
I'm surprised.
I can understand why, but I was so happy to have my kids go away for five weeks in the summer. I was trying to get Charlie to do it every year for the progressive grades, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th grade. But lots been said about the trip and the trip is unique. I'm not sure it happens anyplace else. And it's unique, not only because of the nature of the trip, but for how long Charlie did it. But it shouldn't be overlooked that he was a teacher and administrator here for 38 years at the middle school. And a tremendous teacher and a tremendous administrator. And when I said something in the paper last week, I thought I'd be called out on it. But he was old-school in the sense that you had to be accountable. And that's no offense to the teachers now, but I don't think Charlie was the type that was just going to be your friend. He was going to make you accountable and you were going to respect him and you were going to respect the authority that Charlie had. The trip was unbelievable. I mean, people have talked about it and yes, I've heard from some people that said, well, not everybody went on the trip. But the kids that went on the trip had to earn going on the trip. They had to be good citizens. They had to work at the fundraisers. And the preparation time for this trip was extraordinary. I mean, it wasn't just, oh, we're leaving, we're going to get on a plane on Friday. I mean, these kids had to prepare for weeks and weeks at a time just to go on the trip. And then to have to really take care of themselves. I mean, they had to load and unload the trucks. They had to set up the equipment, set up the tents, take down the tents. They were responsible, you know, at different times for getting dinner ready and cleaning dishes. And it gave them the opportunity to see things that probably many, many kids are never going to see in their lifetime. So again, I've known Charlie for a long time. I think this is well, well, well-deserved. And honestly, it's such a unique type of trip that I've talked to a lot of parents that were chaperones that could memorize the Gettysburg Address. And basically, I think they're the only ones that had a better time than the kids in a lot of cases. It was amazing that the parents would come back so excited and want to go back. And some parents even went back as chaperones on trips when their kids weren't there. I guess that's the next best thing to having your kids gone is for you to leave and leave them at home. But so again, I just want to echo what everybody said here. And I think it's something that's well-deserved and I'd certainly support this happening. There is a process. Mel, do you want to talk about it?
Well, I mean, so there's part of the process, the regulations, that we don't think we have to follow at this point because it was a school committee that brought this forward versus a citizens petition, as it was last year, a group of citizens where we, our new regulations basically talk about if a group of citizens comes forward with a naming idea for part of a school or a school, we didn't have to open it up to the whole community and take other, if other people have other names they want to suggest, then we have to appoint a committee.
Screening committee.
Screening committee, review them all. It's my and Jerry's belief, and I think the rest of the committees, that we don't have to do that this time because we have brought the issue forward as a committee. So we, where our plan would be, we listen to everybody tonight to take it under advisement. There's a lot of different, there is the Main Street area. There's a lot of different ways you could honor him, plaques, signs. So we haven't talked as a committee really yet about how we might do that. We can do it a little bit tonight. But I think our goal was to take it under advisement and probably vote at either our next meeting or the meeting after, as if we were going to do something. Correct? Is that?
That would be, we'd take it under advisement probably the next meeting. Well, the meeting after October Town meeting, which is next week, the following meeting, would take a vote. But I'd be curious to see how the rest of the committee feels. Like I said, I'm probably the only one here that had the type of relationship with Charlie that, you know, through the trip, through my kids going on the trip and having been on the school committee at the time Charlie was still here. And I think Cliff probably knows Charlie as well, but.
My daughter went on the trips with him.
So I don't know if anybody else has any questions or comments.
I've never met the gentleman.
My kids were gone when he had left the school district, but the trips were still going on. But my kids didn't participate.
That's another thing to point out too. Charlie continued with the trips after retirement. I mean, which, again, it literally takes up the whole summer. And he did it every summer, you know, so.
And I know several of my son's friends and my daughter's friends went on the trip. And I've heard nothing but glowing things about Charlie Jones.
I've never heard a kid come back that, you know, that didn't enjoy it. And I think, Clyde, over the years, there were very few kids sent home, I mean, that didn't follow the rules, you know.
If I sent one, once, I'd try not to. But I don't know about Charlie. He probably was much better at the end than figuring out how not to send anything.
I don't remember sending anyone home. I know there were a couple trips to the hospital.
Well, I'm aware of one of those. And I'm not going to talk about it. But, so I don't know if anybody else had any.
Well, I've never met him.
You're going to meet him once a night.
But, oh, great. But I'm also a teacher. And to see the pictures now and to hear the stories and the amount of dedication and love he had for his students, that means a lot. So thank you.
Just make a comment. Nobody made money on this trip. I don't, this is not a profit. Charlie, the chaperones.
Interestingly enough, one part of our policy for sponsoring trips, and this wasn't a school trip, this was a trip during the summer. But we always ask the same question. A kid's going to have the opportunity to go. Can they raise money? Are they going to be able to afford it? There were a lot of fundraisers done for this trip. I mean, and you had to be there. This wasn't optional. So the fundraisers were part of raising money for the trip. And that was taught the kids something else too. I mean, you know, the fact that they had to go out there and work. Their parents weren't just giving them 1,500 or whatever it was. They had to go out and work the fundraisers as well, so.
So I guess I think there are two issues here. When we do take a vote on this, right, there's the issue of, do we support naming something? Then what do we support naming and will, you know, will we maybe have a couple of options on that? And then how do we recognize, you know, what actually recognizes the area that we name or denotes the area that we name, you know, for Charlie Jones? So I think those are the issues that.
We're still in the process after moving from the old buildings into the new buildings, moving some of the plaques.
We still, yeah, we don't.
Some of the plaques from the old building up here and getting them put up. And some people have been asking about it. But certainly, I think, you know, Mark has recommended Main Street. I think that's certainly an option. And I think, you know, there are other things we can think about as well.
Yep.
Jerry, can I make one more comment? So I had a chance to talk about this with Mrs. Bernard. As far as whatever's decided, as far as any financing that needs to be done, all of us here would take.
Who's fundraising?
We would take, so the school committee or the school budget would not be.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah.
We'd make sure that we wanted enough donations to do what needs to be done.
That would be great, yeah.
I do want to say I favor naming something. I don't, I have three or four things in my mind, so I don't know, you know, there's three or four different options I can think about. But I do favor, I think, recognizing him. You know, you can say that a lot of people that come through the school district and been here for 35, 40 years. I don't think that's true. There's not a lot. But he was here 38 years and I think had a huge impact on thousands of students, both in the classroom, as a principal, and on those trips. And so even though the trips weren't school-sponsored, they were obviously spurred by his work in the schools. And, you know, any teacher, and Jerry mentioned, you know, he was big on accountability. I think the teachers today would also be big on accountability. But I think the system has changed so much and the parents have changed. I don't think it's so much the teachers have changed because I think the teachers still would love to demand accountability. But I think the system is a little bit more difficult to work around these days. But I think accountability is a huge thing. And I know that whether it was good or bad, I was always happy when my kids were held accountable for their actions. And so I just think that, you know, that's a really important attribute for him to impart on these kids. And I think when they grow older, you see the same thing from them. So I favor naming something at the school after Ms. Jones.
Anything? Can I get that back to you? I would love to see the picture. Okay.
I was going to name you as the person who was sent to.
Yes. I'll see you.
I'm going to look for my kids in there. They said they went on the trip.
I don't know if this is the right. 1982?
No.
You're not that old. So the process will be, will the next meeting will discuss this?
I would think, Madam Chair, that would be the way to do it, right?
It'll be October 19th.
October 19th. Right. So at October 19th.
Is it proper, I guess, would be the question to bring one or two of you in on the discussion of what it is? Or are you guys leaving it in our willing hands as to what gets named?
I might sound that I've spoken often, my opinion is honest. And Mark very eloquently mentioned that Main Street would be a fitting recognition for Charlie. And the reason I agree with that is because every time we come home from a trip, you know, once I took over the trip, I'd always get phone calls from parents. First of all, my children want to know what they're going to do tomorrow because there's no way to prepare. And second, my child has grown up. It's this four to six-week period of time that they were away and they had come for, you know. They mentioned, so there's this transition. And now I am so joyful watching the middle school students and the high school students together in that hallway, that beautiful hallway. I'd love to see that. That's, it would be a great tribute. That's my very biased opinion.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks. And you're more than welcome to stay.
Some real scintillating items coming up on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Superintendent Bernard, would you like to give us the update on the SSBC?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So I'm happy to tell you that the list of items to report on tonight is a little shorter and I think that's largely because the middle school now is open. And while there's still work to be done, certainly a lot of the things that I reported to you previously have been resolved. But I would like to note that the punchless work, and it is, you know, still extensive, both continues at the middle school and the high school campus. It doesn't take anyone, it doesn't take long to note that the demolition of the old high school continues and it's really picked up steam in the last few days. It's progressing well. I had a meeting with our project managers on Friday and they maintain that the demolition will likely be at or just prior to the end of October concluded. So that's good news and I think holds to the timeline that we were all anticipating. The restoration of that site where the old high school lies, the drain lines, the electrical to feed the streetlights, what ultimately would become the field areas, the parking, the two smaller parking lots. This work is proceeding at a pace that I don't think people are all that thrilled with. There was a hope that the pace for that work to be completed would be moving a little bit quicker than it is. But Ed Whalen and Kevin Nygro from PMA have told me that the reason for that is largely due to the fact that the demolition of the old school must take place before that work can really take place in earnest. But they do anticipate largely where the gymnasium area was would be an area that would be backfilled fairly soon and that the work would pick up some speed at that point. So we're looking forward to that. There's no reason to think that things aren't on the track that they had hoped they would be, but it's just it's something that, you know, needs to be watched. And the tennis courts are open. It was nice to see people using those tennis courts. A week ago Friday, I believe, was the first time that I saw someone on them, which I think would have been September the 18th. So they look great. They're being used during gymnasium classes now. I've seen the middle school students out there and they're just getting some public use. There was public use there tonight as you all came into my office for our earlier meeting. So the project is progressing well. It looks beautiful. I think, you know, we're looking forward to the open house on Wednesday evening to show it off to the community. But I'm happy to report to you that it's being enjoyed thoroughly, I can assure you.
Any questions? I know that we've, and one concern I have in terms of the lower site area restoration is the lighting. And I know we've heard a date of November 1st possibly for those streetlights to be turned on down there. I'm a little bit concerned about that because it's getting darker earlier. I think there might be one streetlight down there.
There is one.
Is there any, I don't even know what form this could take, any possibility of any kind of temporary lighting down there for, until we get the? Because if, I'm going to be honest, they're saying November 1st. I personally don't believe that date. So if the demolition is done at the end of October, I think it's going to take a little bit longer after that. I think it could be six weeks. That's just my guess. So I'm just worried about the lack of lighting down in that area. I don't know if there's any way to put up some temporary lights on temporary wooden poles or whatever, but just something to illuminate that area at night.
The only thing I can say is, Mel, last Thursday's construction meeting, this was brought up, and Kevin Nygro said that he was going to look in to try to do something, expedite and get something down there. I guess the transformer is to be put in later in the project.
Right.
However, you know, I think they're well-aware of the fact that the street was going to be open and being used at the start of the school year. So it seemed to me that there should have been some provision made for that. So Kevin said he was looking into it. We are going to meet again this Thursday morning.
Well, and the SSBC is tomorrow too.
And the SSBC is tomorrow. Good point. So we can maybe try to find out what the plan is. Because it's docked down there. I was down there for the football game last Friday night and it was docked and we did get some no parking signs up temporarily.
I want to positiv, no one was parking there while the soccer game was going on today.
Today, good.
No one when I drove up. So that's.
And that's something the community has to understand. You cannot park on that access road going from 62 up to the high school.
Right.
I have a little bit more information on that issue too. Wayne Hardiker and I went down to that area on Friday afternoon. Wayne then met with a contractor today, this morning, to view the curbing where people have been parking. And right now, there's the temporary cones and the signs on those cones. Although there are fire lane signs posted on the fence at the football area, football field area. And those have been there, but they've been ignored.
Right.
So we expect either tomorrow or Thursday, the contractor's availability and the weather will dictate whether it's tomorrow or Thursday, the curbing being painted yellow from Park Street along, all the way up and including the temporary parking lot that's there because I've noticed people, I think they call it a Cape Cod berm. It almost invites someone to drive on it. So that's all going to be painted, again, depending upon the weather, this week. I also got permission from the police chief that as long as the signs were posted as part of the construction project, they did not need to be authorized in any other way. So I met, as part of my meeting with Kevin Nygro and Ed Whalen on Friday, I brought up to them that point. And they're researching what the exact language can be that would be posted on the signs. And I think they need to be put up again in the temporary parking lot area, not just along the football field. And there's language that the police chief has informed me too that there is, you know, essentially subject to vehicle being towed at the owner's expense type of thing.
Yeah, it's got to be enforced, Sean. Yeah, it's gotta be enforced, I'm telling you right now. That lane is, even tonight, early on, there was a bus that was, I think, just dropping and picking off a team, and they had the lane blocked, and people are literally trying to sneak around it, and their car's coming down the other way.
Yeah, they're in the wrong lane when they're around.
And I, I know when the, the pressure's on and there's a football game and everyone's looking for a parking space, people are gonna start doing that. The other people that do it all the time are the youth football parents. They park there all the time, even when the space is in the parking lot.
Yeah.
So it's gotta be enforced, or else it's gonna be a problem.
I think, I think both the, and by the way, the communication also included the fire chief on this, for the obvious reasons. So I, I'm hopeful that the steps, I'm glad to hear that there was some progress today with the temporary cones and the signage. But yeah, I mean, it's been a longstanding problem, but it's just, it's been, it's exacerbated by, I think, the, 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 the less parking spaces being available to people and just, you know, pulling off the road, so.
I have two other questions. The other good thing was the bus for the visiting team today actually pulled up and backed into where Dodge Road was against the fence there. That's a perfect place for the bus to wait.
One of the buses was actually parked up top here.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
And blocking the access coming out.
I know, I saw that, too.
But that wasn't so bad, you can still get around it and everything, but it was up back.
If you don't mind, Mel, just on the point about the November first, I think you're right. I, I, I think they, I believe the information was November.
Right.
So in my mind, that could be, you know, the twenty-eighth, or, you know, that could be right before Thanksgiving, too. It could, or any time in the, so I, I think you're right, I think November first might be a little bit optimistic.
So the other two questions, comments, we've had discussion about a crosswalk going in.
Mm-hmm.
And there was some discussion that, well, there was no crosswalk planned there, yet there were two yellow, like, I think, the handicap.
Temporarily, yeah.
Access ramp across from each other, and that's where the kids are crossing. I mean, is, is the plan to put a crosswalk there, or is that still in discussion?
So I, I raised that, again, that also with Kevin about the lighting, and he indicated to me that he was optimistic that that could be completed, but it was not part of the plan.
See, I don't understand that, because it was one there before. I don't, I don't get how it was part of the plan before, but now it's not part of the plan.
I wish I could explain that to you, I just, I'm only conveying to you the information.
Somebody didn't put lines on the drawing and, or there's no crosswalk.
Right.
But, you know.
But they had the, the ramps for the handicap access on both sides.
Right.
They just didn't draw the lines between them.
Across, right, between them, right.
And now you, now you know how contractors think.
There will be a crosswalk.
It's an extra, and that will cost you five thousand dollars.
The thing that disturbs you is that when they did the paving and everything, they put the crawl, the crosswalk stuff in like that. It was done the next day. It was all done, except there was no crosswalk down there, so.
There will be a crosswalk one way or another, whether it becomes part of this project, or I have the person do it that's doing the yellow markings for the curbing. We're gonna put one, it needs to be.
Needs to be there, because that's where all the crosswalks are down and up.
The last communication, I think I shared with you, with Kevin, was on Friday, so I'm giving him a little opportunity, you know? Because he's been very responsive, so, but at the, in the, at the end of the day, there needs to be a crosswalk.
Final thing is, we had some discussion at the last athletics subcommittee meeting about the tennis courts and what their use is going to be for, for tennis only. And I'm, I'm sure this was an okay use, but I was driving, my brother-in-law's actually in town from Texas, and I was showing him the school today. And there was a gym class using the tennis courts, and they had frisbees, and there were, I don't know what they're doing. I'm not saying they could damage the course, the courts, but I guess my question is what? We need to have some sort of parameters around the use for those tennis courts, right? I don't wanna see street hockey being played out there, or, so I'm just wondering, and it's, you know, the principal's decision here, I guess, mainly, but I'm just wondering if we're gonna have some sort of, because we discussed putting signs up that say tennis only, please take notice, or, or keep out, please take notice, or whatever. But I, I just wanted to put that in your ear, so you could talk to Mr. Pratt about that.
I think it was actually the middle school that was out there today.
The middle school?
Yes.
Okay. Or, or Ms. O'Connell?
Sure, I can.
Okay.
Mel raises a good point, I can, when he said street hockey, that, that's a real possibility.
Yes.
That that could happen.
We don't want that in there.
That's not what we want out there.
Right.
Skateboarding.
Or skateboarding, or, no, they can skateboard, no, never mind.
No, please.
They skateboard at Editch River Park. Perfect place for it. That's all, thanks.
Yes.
I might, can you share the update on parking lots on the other side of the school?
The other side.
What do you mean, the other side of the school?
The line for new parking to go in.
At the Batch Elder side?
Yeah, the one that would be for like the field, the.
No, that's, you're talking, you're talking.
Decent.
Yes.
That's the end of the project. That's the end of the project.
Or does the hardtop come in first, and then?
No.
I don't know the schedule, it's at the end.
You're talking probably, the slates bring it the earliest. At the earliest.
Yeah, next spring, I would guess.
The plan is for two smaller parking lots in that area for a total of a hundred and eighty-five. One, one's a hundred spaces, the other one's eighty-five, but I think, I think, yeah, that's at the very end.
Yeah, just getting it in my head for events that happen there, how many cars can you bring in? How long?
Well, a hundred and eighty-five.
Uh, but right now.
Oh, right now, there's only about sixty.
They allow us to go past the, to go all the way in front of the big court, so pass the blockade there. They said that was fine for our county, but I just don't know how much, how far down it could actually go.
Well, you can't get that much, the fence is there, the fence is closed at night anyway, so.
Right at the end.
Yeah, you can't go beyond that, but otherwise you're gonna be driving in a big hole.
I just had one question, as far as the bathrooms, because a couple of people have asked. The team room has no facilities for public, correct?
Correct.
And we have porta-potties for the football games.
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
That, okay. I was gonna say, I was gonna bring that up under subcommittee reports later.
Yeah, we gotta report on the athletics subcommittee.
All right, perfect, okay, thank you. All right, moving on, the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school committee goals action plan.
So I'm happy, Madam Chairman, if you would like to just walk you through that a little bit, okay. So at the last meeting, the school committee adopted their goals following your, your two workshops over the summer, and I think a preliminary review of the goals. So with that, I took the liberty of, of drafting the, the action plan for the year. And the reason I, I feel it's a draft at this point is, again, I took some liberties with establishing some of the timelines for you in meeting those goals. So, you know, if there are any changes that you, that you see, that you would like to be made, not only with respect to the timelines, but any other changes, you know, certainly I'm able to do that for you, and I can, I can have a final copy available for you. I could send that out electronically as early as tomorrow, if there are any changes to be made.
The only two that I was wondering about are, is February too soon for social media policy?
That's.
And is December too soon in terms of evaluating the implementation of the relations with boosters, support organizations, student activity accounts policies?
Should we give each of those a couple of more months? That's, that's my only question for the committee.
Sure, I, I think.
I think February might be too early for.
Probably appreciate it, yeah.
Social media policy.
Um, yeah, I, I kinda saw those two as well, so.
Do you wanna shoot for, like, a June twenty sixteen, does that?
That's, I was thinking maybe next, yeah.
I, I see no reason why.
And for the, I mean, Mr. Conley can tell us better, but, you know, I know you're gonna give a report tonight, and there are still a lot of groups that.
Have none.
Aren't compliant.
Right.
And so should be, should be, we first be working to get them compliant, and then wait a month or two after that to assess how it's going. That's.
Um, sure, I think maybe a couple more months, always listed, I'm trying, December?
December.
December, and I was saying maybe push, push that out to February, if the committee thinks that makes sense.
Well, I noticed that there's, you know, I'm kinda jumping the gun here, but there's a donation, and it's by an organization, and the organization isn't listed as having been.
Right.
Right.
Because that was one of my questions.
Yeah, I'm planning on giving an update on that. I mean, I think, I think the majority of our, you know, organizations that we've worked with have complied, and I'll be reporting out on that, but I think it's gonna be an ongoing process this year, as organizations continue to kind of put their paperwork together and, and comply. And then it is kind of a, you know, a process of monitoring the, the policy and, and, so I think, maybe pushing that out to kind of early spring will give the, maybe a more thorough kind of evaluation of kind of how things went this, this first year, where, that the policy's in full operation.
So you think in March or April, maybe?
I think in March, yeah, I think March or early April.
Would you like to make it April just to be safe? Give us a little, okay?
Those are the only two that I had, everything else is fine to me.
On the student activity one, we are, we will be going through an, an audit this year, an internal audit this fall, which we're required to do every year. So we've, we've put procedures in place to have a regular schedule of an internal audit being done by the town accountant. I've worked with Liz Poveo, she's been very, you know, graciously accepted the offer to work with the school department to, to audit the account. We felt it was best that, that be done by an outside internal party, as opposed to those very connected to the accounts, like myself or, or my office. So that, that will be happening this fall. And then we have engaged independent third-party auditors to come in later in the late winter, early spring, which is a once every three-year requirement for certain accounts that reach over a certain threshold. This year, we're gonna focus on the high school. So if that's later in the spring, you know, those audits would have taken place. And we could even have, if interested, have a report out by that third party to, to let it, you know, there would be an issue of a formal report that we would receive, probably in, in early spring in the, as well.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll update the document and send it to all of you as a final draft.
Good work, John, that's tedious.
That's good, that's good, thank you.
Okay, and then I'll either, Cliff or Julie, would you like to take the policy of the physical restraint? Is there anything further?
You just need to approve it, right?
Second reading.
Yeah.
Second reading of.
Any, is there any input from anybody on that?
I move to approve the second reading of the physical restraint of students policy, and note that we are doing this to comply with new state regulations.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Good work, thanks.
Yep.
That's tedious, still.
Chipping, chipping away.
So it was interesting to see what comes up, you know, mandated by the state. Oh, how do we do that one?
Another policy, another new policy.
Okay, the fiscal year, Mr. Conley, would you like to take that?
Sure.
For the capital improvements?
So included in your packet this evening was really in a follow-up to the detailed presentation that was given at the last meeting, where we went, we thoroughly reviewed the updated five-year large capital plan and the priority list that the administration has put together over the last three years, which is what we're required to submit to the CIPC, Capital Improvement Planning Committee, by September thirtieth. So again, not, nothing has really changed from the last meeting, based on feedback and comments and discussion that transpired after the, the large capital presentation. You know, the administrator's list of priorities has remained the same, I will just reiterate that. And putting together the priority list, certainly the focus on, was on certainly school safety and projects that would have the largest educational impact on student learning. Clearly, certainly front and foremost of those would be the technology items to update the wireless infrastructure over, you know, certainly beginning next year, that would be, that's the top priority, and continuing any remaining work that would need to be done in, in year two of the plan. And an ongoing computer replacement plan cycle that we've been receiving with the town is, is a priority in each, each year, but certainly a priority for next year as well. Priorities three and four in fiscal seventeen would be the utility vehicle, the tool cat, to properly maintain not only the, you know, high school, middle school campus, as well as the other, other, you know, school, schools. We certainly feel that, that that's a strong need, and it's a priority number three for next year. The special education wheelchair van, which is part of an ongoing replacement plan, to replace each special education van to transport certainly students to our in-town programs. We feel it's important to maintain that replacement schedule if we get behind, you know, we, we risk certainly, certainly, these, these vans are getting to the end of their useful life. Completing the hood school paving, which began this past summer, which is going very, very well. There's remaining funds to complete that project. And then the final request for fiscal seventeen, which is priority six on the list, is the continuation, a, a, a repeat request that just missed last year, and that's the multi-function activity bus. So those were, those are the, really, the six projects we would submit that I think the CIPC would, would certainly focus on when we, they review all the, the capital requests that will come in from each department. They do ask us to submit three years, and we do look at the other requests as a sort of an out, three-year outlook as we get towards the end of the process. But really, these six projects would be the projects that we would ask the CIPC to, to give a lot of attention to and focus on as we put together the, the capital project list of items for the, certainly the annual town meeting in June. Certainly what's also on the fringes, what's also part of this, although not on the list, is what will be happening this fall, which we'll, we'll know really short, quickly, or soon, in terms of the little school roof project. So that would, that's obviously a priority, we're in the pipeline for mass school building authority, you know, funds. And we expect to know a lot more of the results of a feasibility study later this week. But there, there will be an article at this fall's town meeting. So I think, I, I sense that there was some consensus on this list, I think I just opened up if there's any questions on any of the items.
I have a question and a, and a comment. So once these go before the CIPC, they re.
Prioritize.
Reset the priorities, right?
Right.
Correct.
And it's highly unlikely that we're gonna get all of these approved, I don't think.
That's correct.
So I guess my question is, if we get one through three, say, can we live another year with the current van we have for special education? The wheelchair van? I guess, that's my concern.
It would be a challenge, there's no, that, that vehicle, as you can see, has over a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it. It's already needed some repairs this, already this year, this school year, so.
So while I know we, that utility vehicle is, I would, I'd probably stop one percent short of, I'd call it ninety-nine percent a priority rather than a hundred percent, I'm just wondering what's more important between those two? Because I'm really concerned that if we don't get that van, we're gonna be in trouble next year, in terms of transporting kids.
You know, I think, when we deliberated on how we would prioritize the list to present to you, we had that same discussion, but we felt we have no tool cat or, or piece of equipment at all, whereas we have a van that if we needed to invest a little bit more money in to make do with it, but like Michael said, it's, it would be a challenge. But we, we at least have something to work with.
There is a backup vehicle.
That's all, that's right. My question is, it's still safe, the van's still safe?
Yes.
Just has a lot of miles on it?
Oh, yeah, that wouldn't even, right.
Yes, correct.
And then my other comment is that, we'll give a report later under subcommittees, but at finance planning team, it was noted, and I, I wrote this down, I remember it being said, that if the little school project goes through, little school roof, and if it's bonded, that each year, the amount of the payment will be deducted from the pool.
Correct.
Of CIPC, which means to me, that's gonna count as a school project.
That, yeah, we'll have, I mean, it's, it's potentially, I mean, that will be part of a project that the CIPC, when they look at the.
Will deduct.
All the projects and put together their funding strategy of what we can fund every year, that will have to play into, to what that amount would be.
Remember what I'm saying is, they'll put.
Yeah, so you're correct.
They'll put that every year on this little school roof project.
As a school, correct.
If it's twenty thousand or ten thousand as a school project.
That was my concern as well, will they? Will it be held against us? Right.
I, I believe it will. I mean, I'm sure it will, there, I mean, it's a school project, and so, it's, right.
I don't think, that wasn't conveyed at the meeting, but.
No, it wasn't conveyed, but that's my belief.
Might, might it be, I, I don't know, I have no basis.
Not held against us, but it'll be said, this is a school project that money's being allocated to.
It would impact how much money we're getting.
Yes, that's.
I couldn't agree with it, well, but again, it, it doesn't solve the problem of whether or not we need to replace.
No, no, I know, I know, I'm just making, I just wanna make sure everyone's aware that that was stated at the meeting, that, because, because there had been some discussion previously that it would be outside.
Correct.
Correct.
CIPC.
But it looks like it's gonna have to be come from the CIPC pool of money that we're working with every year.
Yeah. And, and I had asked about, in terms of how long they would bond it.
Yeah, that's my question, Mel, was it five years?
Well, Liz Poveo said it could be up to thirty.
Yeah.
I think, I think we'll have a better idea later this week, I'm actually gonna talk to you about it under my supplemental report. We're, we're expecting an estimate tomorrow.
It would be, I would anticipate it would be greater than five years.
So I'm, I'm not saying I don't wanna go forward, the project, obviously I do, but I just want the, the committee to be aware that that was stated at the finance planning team meeting.
I mean, what it would impact is future borrowing and bonding on other projects. But once it's bonded, it would become part of the regular borrowing, you know, it would fit, have to fit into our funding strategy that we kind of laid in, that, that we kind of laid out, you know, a couple of years ago.
Right.
And it could certainly impact what's, you know, the borrowing capacity of future capital projects.
Yeah, but I think what Mel's saying is, and I don't wanna say this the wrong way, is that it's gonna be viewed by, you know, members of the finance committee, board of selectmen, and other members of the committee, that that's an expense that's already been allocated to the schools, and therefore, that'll be.
And I'm not saying whether that's right or wrong, or fair or not fair, I'm just saying it's, it's going to be there. We need to, we need to be aware of that, that's all. it's, it's going to be there and we need to, we need to be aware of that.
So September 30th is the deadline and if there's, you know, consensus by committee, we would move forward and submit the capital improvement planning committee, you know, worksheets, you know, forward after tonight's meeting.
This priority list?
Yes, in this, in this order.
Would someone like to make a motion to put this list into motion?
Some moved.
All right, in a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Mike.
I am also under new business, so, going to move forward. So in your packet this evening, as we touched upon it earlier, is a memo that is certainly updating the committee on the status of the booster and support group, applications of recognitions that we have received to date in compliance with the school committee policy, LEC and LEC dash R, that was adopted last, last year. So I'm happy to report that we are comfortable moving forward this evening and recommending nine organizations move forward as an official vote of, of recognition as organizations that have submitted the application and the required paperwork and have shown that they are in compliance or, or certainly in good standing with their, certainly their status, whether, you know, their non-for-profit status and, you know, whether, with certainly the state and certainly the IRS. So these nine organizations listed in the memo have certainly moved forward and completed the application, they have shown evidence of having, you know, a good standing FEIN, they have submitted certainly a mission statement that's very consistent with the school's mission, certainly their, and their purpose, they've submitted a list of planned fundraising activities, so they've certainly done what we've asked them to do. And we are prepared tonight to recommend, there's a recommended motion at the end of the memo for the school committee to publicly recognize these organizations as organizations that we will continue to work with, collaboratively with, and have a working relationship for the betterment of the North Reading Public Schools and its programs. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, everyone seems to be complying, I have, I did meet with some of these organizations. There are two others that have expressed interest and have submitted some paperwork that are not on the list, but I think are very, very close, I anticipate that shortly, within the next month or two, would be in, you know, certainly full compliance, it's just some, I've exchanged some, some communication with them and there's just a couple of things that they're working on. One of which was being a touchdown club, North Reading Touchdown Club, and the other being the North Reading Hockey Boosters are our two organizations I've reached out with and have, have, are pretty close to completing the process. So that being said, I guess, are there any questions?
So what are we doing, my first question is, at the high school, we have the maskers group, how do they, what kind, they raise a lot of money, they go out and they solicit ads for the programs, for the performances. They, how is that organized and shouldn't that be under this?
So the maskers is essentially an approved student activity and club, so they're, they're not a separate entity in a sense because they're, they're student activity-
So there's no outside boosters group for that?
There's no, no, I mean, there's, there's the-
Well, you have, you have music boosters, you have Hornet Productions, those are organizations that support those efforts.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the maskers would fall under the other thing with the student activities, so that we're going to do an audit on and all that kind of stuff.
Correct, yep.
The second question is, how many other, other groups that aren't, that haven't had discussions with you and how are we going to handle that moving forward?
I would say we accept the donations and fine them for not being in compliance.
I mean, I think, I think you, we can certainly always accept donations, but I think in certain, in some cases, you have to look at an organization as kind of like a group of individuals potentially, as opposed to an organized organization with, you know, non-for-profit status. Many of the team groups that were sort of, kind of, the Friends of groups that were kind of somewhat affiliated with the boosters group-
A sports team, or, yeah.
We have essentially created a sort of athletic fundraising account and when there's team fundraises, you know, but those funds are being kind of flown through our own athletic fundraising account, revolving account. You know, it's mainly small funds to help support their awards assemblies, et cetera, that they may be doing.
So there's no official outside group?
There's no official outside-
There are those teams that don't have a supporting group associated with them.
These are the two that I was going to ask Mike about, the Touchdown Club and the Hockey Boosters.
Same with me, those are the two I wrote down.
And anybody else, I had that as well.
I'm, I'm quite confident, I've had, I think I had a very good meeting with the, you know, the, the heads of the Hockey Boosters, the president, and we met over the summer, went over it in detail, and they're very close, they're just working on updating their FEIN and getting things kind of straightened out, their filing straightened out, which they're, certainly are, will be very close to doing that, anticipate certainly before the season that they would submit everything to me. And the Touchdown Club, I was very close to putting them on the list, I just, there was one question I had, that I'm waiting for the treasurer to get back to me and some of the filing that I wasn't seeing online, on kind of the online websites, but I think once that gets cleared up, I-
And we believe they were far enough along and close enough to the deadline to accept that, the one year tonight.
Yeah, no, that, I think as, as Jerry did, those are the two, two names that I wrote down, Touchdown Club and North Reading Hockey Boosters. But my, so my question is, if there are other groups, these groups have gone through the trouble, whatever trouble it is, for some more than others, to make sure they comply, and now we're recognizing them to that as complying, I think other, if there are other groups, they need to comply because it's not fair that these groups went through.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, do we just, I would never want to do this, but do we tell them they can't donate money as a group unless they're part of this organization by X date, unless they're part of the, the new regulations?
That date has passed.
Right, but do we give them a grace period, is what I'm saying? And are there other groups? I don't even know if there are other groups, that's my, my question, are there other groups that-
Yeah, I mean, these, I mean, without, these are the eleven that I've-
These are the major-
These are the major organizations.
This is what we, I think this is, it's fair to say, this is where we kind of expected to be right now.
Okay, sure.
It picked up a little bit at the end, I think that meeting with the Hockey Boosters was in August, I remember a meeting in the library, I mean, I think-
Yep.
We hoped that, that some would come forward that hadn't for a while, but all of a sudden, it is, kind of the deadline got closer, I think, you know, people did-
It's really good to see all the parent associations.
It is.
Yeah, it's a great list, I think it's a great list.
The Diamond Club is good.
Right.
People have been, I think, very responsive, you know, in the end, it came together, I think, you know, about as good as we had hoped for. But there, there is the risk, I think, that we might get, you know, what I might label as like a perpetual donor from an organization that we know had some sort of, you know, informal organization to it, and we may, we may not be able to accept that donation. But there, then there are the others, like you have tonight, a request for an acceptance of a, like kind of a one-time donation, I think that's okay because there is no mechanism for that, I'm talking about the defibrillators.
Right. Well, that's, I think that's a sole person-
You're going to have, you're going to have-
It's an annual, you know, it's a fundraising thing in memory of somebody and-
Exactly.
They've-
Kind of a one-time-
They've stated early on that their goal was to put defibrillators in the schools.
Correct.
Correct.
I think that's different than, than, I don't think an individual has to-
We, we see it that way too.
Correct, yeah.
I just had a somewhat related question, how do we handle local businesses that make donations? Do they-
So again, those are-
-fill out any special paperwork and?
I mean, that's, those are sort of a private, it's a private donation from a local merchant or business that we're able to accept and-
I assume on their part they have to fill out a bit of a tax purposes, it just happens.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there are, those do occur.
Yeah.
Fortunately.
This is great, I think, a good progress.
How do you handle, like, the individual sports that raise money for?
So we're, we're handling a lot of that internally right now, so we, we've, they're sort of doing a lot of that in affiliation with that team as a school-sponsored program, and we, if there's some fundraising going on that goes, that's approved through the principal and to our office, those, those funds are coming in, we're depositing in an athletic fundraising account-
Okay.
-denominated for that team, and then it's usually for maybe a, maybe a small purchase for, for, you know, practice jerseys or-
Hats or something like that.
Mostly it's awards, it's, they're raising funds for the awards banquet.
Okay.
So if I, or as a school commander or anybody in the public, can I access a document that shows me what, this document, that would show me what these groups are planning for fundraising, et cetera? That'll be a public document, I assume, right? Or will it not be? Because this is, so, I know we have other regulations, and I think one of the regulations says, students won't wear uniforms while collecting, I'm pretty sure I read this, that they're not supposed to be wearing the uniforms, but yet, I've seen students in the past month wearing uniforms, going house to house, selling things, collecting money.
Sure.
So I guess, how, I don't, again, I don't want to be seen as trying to discourage, but if we have regulations, how do we enforce them?
Right. I think that uniform, that came out of the final version of the policy.
Did it come out?
It did. I think there was a, there's language in there that says-
But I know there was language saying that, so-
That was the earliest version that we kind of condensed. So, I mean, we-
Again, the public document, in terms of, like, is it a public document or not? I don't know, anybody else in the committee have that question?
You mean if somebody wanted to know what fundraisers were being conducted by?
Yeah.
I mean, we have that information available because-
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm-
Yeah, I mean, it's not like, we don't- It's all in this folder of all the-
Yeah, we don't post it as-
No, 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 not post it, if I called up and said, hey, I'm just curious, I have an idea, I have an idea I want to propose for one of the groups to fundraise, or any other groups doing the same sort of thing, I don't want to step on their-
Sure, I think that, it could be that way, and I also think it could be someone calling and saying, I just want to know if this is a legitimate fundraising effort, and I think we would, we would have the documentation to be able to say that it was or was not.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Could I have a motion? What? Oh, I'm sorry. No, I just, similar to what Mel said, one, as you now accept and recognize booster organizations, could the school committee send a letter back to each organization saying that they've been recognized so that we can put it in our folders and pass it to the next ward member so that they understand, here's the process you go through? And similar to what Mel was saying, you know, we filled in, each organization did complete an appendix E and an appendix A, which if the school did want to keep on file, it would make it at a district level instead of at each individual ward, it would make it easier for us to say, here's last year's document, go look at it. Because like, for example, the Bachelor School Parent Organization doesn't have a website. We do now use Gmail and Google to hold the key documents, but I feel like it would be so much easier if I could always say, even if the person who runs the Gmail side things forgets about it, moves away, whatever, you always have a copy of it at the district level.
I think that, personally, I think that would be helpful to, because these organizations are always changing officers and members, to have access to previous year documents, I think would-
Yeah, I mean, they can always come by our office and pick up those documents.
Right, it's just those two things, since we submitted them as PDFs, and it makes, I feel like it would be easier for me to say to parents, like, yeah, we're totally a legit organization, here's all my tax stuff, but did you know I'm also recognized by the school committee? Go to their website, here's, and here you can see me being recognized.
I actually do, I, I do think a letter to have, something to have on there-
They need to know that this is-
Folder would be good, and I think it probably should come from Michael at the school committee.
Are you okay with it? We'll do it on your behalf, you know, we'll note that-
I would think so, yeah.
At the such and such date of the school committee.
Within second, I think, listed somewhere on our website should be these, the following organizations have been approved by the school committee as complying with the new booster regulations. And then list all the organizations.
That makes sense.
The policy for reinforcement might, and the press-
Yeah.
Sure.
Of recognizing people might draw out some smaller ones that might-
I agree.
The policy is online as well as the application, is a fillable PDF that these organizations can access right from the website, so I think adding this information and they could write in that same section would be helpful. I agree.
Good idea.
Adam Chair, I'd move that the North Reading School Committee recognize the organizations listed one through nine that we've, on the list provided by Mr. Conley as support groups whose mission is consistent with the North Reading Public Schools' mission and school committee policies and authorize school administration to have a collaborative working relationship with and for the betterment of the North Reading Public Schools and its fine programs.
Cliff's second, and I would just like to name the organizations publicly, Batch Helder School, Parents Association, Hood School, Parents Association, E. F. Little School, Parents Association, North Reading Middle School, Parents Association, North Reading High School, Parents Association, Friends of Hornet Productions, which is involved with the middle school music and drama, North Reading Music Boosters, Inc., North Reading Diamond Club, and the North Reading High School Hornet Hall of Fame.
Great.
All right.
Yep. It says organization, right? Karen, what are the reasons for that?
No, it says association.
Association.
We'll change that.
Okay.
We'll make sure Michael gets all the titles right before the letters go out.
Yes, I'm closing.
All right.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Again, Michael.
Okay, so, next in, on the agenda and in your packet was a discussion on FY '17 school committee budget goals, so certainly consistent and in line with the school committee goals and action plan that was discussed earlier this evening, as well as in line with the district's strategic plan, which I know Mr. Benard will discuss in, later this evening. We have certainly taken the discussion that took place at the two school committee goals workshops this past summer and drafted for, to facilitate the discussion this evening, you know, draft FY '16 budget goals for your, for your certainly discussion and review. The changes that we made to the FY 2016 budget goals are highlighted in red font, and the FY '16 budget goals from last year that was adopted is also included in your packet, so you can refer to those as, as well. So we certainly felt goal number one, and again, certainly very similar to what we've done in the past, should be an effort to support year five of NRPS 2016, since we are, would be completing that year, this fiscal year, but looking at, at supporting the completion of NRPS 2016 and contributing to the development of a new strategic plan for the school district known as NRPS 2021, which would focus on the following areas. So these six bullets referenced under goal number one are the major bullets that we have certainly focused on in the development of, you know, the, the district's, you know, plan for continuous improvement, which we'd be looking to move towards NRPS 2021. That would be maintaining certainly low class size, higher identified personnel, that would be a part of the document, support staff training, professional development, purchase identified instructional materials, purchase identified instructional technology supplies and equipment, and fund small capital requests. So we looked, we reviewed these, we didn't see a need to make changes to these six bullets, we felt that it was certainly covered, as, as though as many of the actions and the objectives of NRPS 2021 will evolve and be, and change, we thought these six bullets would certainly be, be a priority.
Adam Chair?
Yes.
Just, I, I guess I have a little bit of an issue with maintain low class size. We have a lot of classes at the high school that aren't low, and so I don't, I don't know if there, I'd like to add, maintain and, or restore, because we don't have low class size in a lot of cases.
Sure.
At the elementary level, we do.
Go re-prioritize.
So, at some, at some schools, so I'd like to, I don't know if it's restore and maintain or something-
Sure.
Because, because I, I think that's important, that in, as far as our goals moving forward, we look to bring class sizes lower. I don't know if the rest of the committee-
I wonder if, could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Do you, you have kind of a guideline as a committee that you like to see? Do we want to phrase it something like, you know?
The numbers in there?
You know, exactly, or, yeah, you know.
The ranges?
You know, strive to achieve, meeting the established goal for student teacher ratio, something like that.
I like that better.
Okay.
That, the numbers that we have right now, which are, I could, I always forget the exact numbers.
Okay, that's, that's a good comment. Okay, so we would make that, we'll make that change. Goal number two was continuing an objective to maintain the commitment to upkeep school facilities. We made some slight changes to some of the bullets in terms of evaluating the need for additional staffing and services to support the new middle school, high school campus, evaluate the operational costs associated with the new middle school, high school campus. So we're certainly, this is the first year we'll be going through operational costs and utility data for the full campus. So we'd want to certainly evaluate those operational costs and work any changes into the budget process. And we did adopt a new facility rental fee schedule last spring, but we felt there would be a need to evaluate the newly adopted facility rental schedule and during the budget process as we, as we normally would to see if there's any need for any changes. And then the first bullet, maintain, repair and improve facilities and grounds, maintain the same. The third goal, we are kind of in our third straight year of a need to continue to evaluate the food service program and identify the program for two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. We went through an extensive review two years ago, but we are on a one-year extension to the food service model and program. Things are certainly looking, you know, positive, and we certainly ended last year favorably, but we'd want to continue to evaluate the food, food program, food service program this year. The fourth goal was something that we just, we just did, update the five-year capital improvement plan for school vehicles, facilities, and technology. That's remained the same from last year. The fifth goal, this came out of discussion that was part of your goal workshop, which would be the need to monitor the financial impact of federal and state unfunded mandates on the North Reading Public Schools. So we did quite a bit of work on that about two years ago, or a year and a half ago, where we put together an extensive document of all the unfunded mandates, and the administrative team, the central office team plans to revisit that document and make any updates to that document. Number six would be just to commit to the restoration of school and department operating budgets. Last year's goal was, you know, we, you know, certainly tried to do that through the budget process. Unfortunately, we felt just short of restoring those school and department operating budgets. We certainly feel this year that will have to be a focal point, a priority when we get to the budget process of, of looking at, you know, the expense and instructional material operating budgets at each, at each school as well as the department level. Seven, eight, and nine, all remained essentially the same. We may have added a few, you know, certainly items under, item seven, manage unforeseen costs, certainly around special education, transportation, energy, and maintenance. We always look to develop a school district budget supported by the finance planning team, so that goal has remained the same from last year. And then number nine would be continue to explore reducing fees for the various, you know, certainly the fees that we have adopted, athletic, extracurricular, kindergarten, busing, and all educational programs as a long-term budget goal. So pretty similar, but we, we have made some changes. I think the, the item under bullet one, bullet one on the class size and goal one is, we'll certainly make that change. But is any other questions or comments on the document?
The only one I, it has Mr. Bowers as vice chair, but I don't take offense.
I'm not the vice chair.
I'm the vice chair. That's all right. The other comment I had was, we may be doing this already, but does it make sense to have a goal of constantly reviewing and assessing new technology and online products that make it easier for residents to pay fees, et cetera? We may, we may do that, but I was wondering if it makes sense to have that in our goals, to constantly assess new technology that makes it easier for residents to pay.
To pay their pay fees online.
Pay fees online.
Yeah, I mean, that's going to certainly be, be explored. Right now, we have that, you know, partnership with Unibank through, through the town, and, you know, unfortunately, there are some convenience fees and so forth.
I mean, there are, there are a lot of technologies that, I don't know if they're appropriate, but, for example, PayPal. You know, you can, you can pay a lot of businesses with PayPal. I don't know what the, what the fees would be. And a lot of people use PayPal, and it might be convenient. Or there's a thing called Venmo, which I don't think I'd recommend, because right now it's more for personal use. But I guess that's the only thing, if, just to look at, I'm not saying we have to implement, but to constantly look at those, and if there are any things that might make life easier, even for you and your staff.
Right, there are, there's a lot of software out there.
Right.
Certainly, it would, that goal is something that would certainly involve a collaborative relationship and partnership with the town treasurer's office and town accountant's offices. They would have to certainly be on board as the.
So maybe that would be part of the goal.
Ultimate custodian.
To work, you know, to re, review new technologies and, you know, collaborate with the town, where it makes sense. I don't know if the rest of the committee agrees with that, but.
It would be nice, because that, what do you call it, convenience fee?
Yes.
It's just easier to write a check than to get charged another fee on top of the fee that you're paying.
But I think that's standard, that fee.
Yeah, I know.
It is standard. I don't, I haven't seen.
PayPal has fees too.
PayPal has fees too.
PayPal does, and, quite honestly, several years ago, Unibank was one of the more attractive ones because they didn't have fees for, you know, certain, certain credit cards and so forth, but unfortunately now that they do. So they, they were, several years ago when we implemented Unibank, and a lot of the school districts did that, it was because they were the less expensive convenience fees out there. But we can certainly explore it and, you know, research other options.
I know some people don't like to use online checks in giving access.
Electronic check.
Right, that costs twenty-five cents.
Right.
That's the best fee going.
Right, and that used to be free up until two years ago, unfortunately.
Thanks.
Okay, we can.
My only comment is, I think we are in for a very challenging budget season. I think there's a storm on the horizon, and I think that we may want to start thinking about things outside the box that we can do in preparation for this next budget season. I think if we just go through the same type of routine that we've gone through in the past, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge.
I don't disagree with that.
The people will speak.
Well, I just think, again, available funds is going to be an issue this year, and, and we have some additional expenses as a result of the new campus, that those alone are going to be, I think, fairly significant. And then we have to deal with staffing, and so, some of these goals are a little unrealistic, to be honest with you, although I know we always keep on the reduction of fees goal.
Right.
But it's, I think it's going to be a tough budget season.
I think we're going to have to be very creative this year.
Yep. And very frugal as we proceed through the, through this year.
Yes.
Does it make sense for me to encompass your comments tonight, come back with a revision for next meeting? Because we don't actually have to do it tonight, or?
I think there's some minor changes that we could just vote condition on those. Are we voting on this?
Sure.
Based on.
Based on the recommendations that were made.
Yes, recommended, okay.
All right, well, with that, I will take a motion to accept the school committee budget goals.
I'll move to accept the fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget goals as edited and annotated tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you yet again. Are we moving?
Yes.
You may, you may want to, yeah. I don't want you to miss anything. So I, I wanted to present to you tonight the, what I think has become kind of the annual update of our district strategic plan, and commonly known as NRPS two thousand sixteen. And I'm also going to spend a little bit of time talking with you, thank you, about where we, where we stand with transitioning to a new strategic plan. It's, it's really hard to believe, I'm sure you all share this, that it's hard to believe that our five-year plan is, is coming to a close in its fifth year, but be that as it may, I'm going to, I'm just going to walk you through what I think are some, some kind of salient points, and, and talk to you about the work that I see on the horizon for this school year, and, and then look toward, toward the future. So I thought it was important to just remind you that really what, what the basis of our strategic plan, our, our strategy for the future, so to speak, emanated from the administrative council's work around the book Strategy and Action, and that really served as kind of the blueprint, and continues to serve us well for, for designing the strategy that we have for the school district, that with the ultimate goal of being maximizing student achievement. And I think this, this graphic does a nice job. It's taken from the book of just showing the interaction among teachers and students and the content, and that the instructional core really must remain the focus of the work that we do on a daily basis. And I think that, that has been true, and NRPS two thousand sixteen has served us very well for the last few years in a number of areas, but I think largely in, in elevating student achievement and also securing the financial resources that we believed we needed in, in order to do our best work. So as I prepared the, the PowerPoint to share with you tonight, I thought it was important to kind of take you back a little bit and, and just remind you that, in extent, it was, it was a difficult task for the administrative council in two thousand, what was the two thousand ten, eleven school year, to, to kind of come up with what our bumper sticker vision, if you will, kind of that, those few words that we would, we would always hold true around our decision-making. And for us, the administrative council, and ultimately the school committee and the, the staff at large of the district, agreed that the North Reading Public Schools would prepare all students to be productive citizens who, who would thrive in the twenty-first century. And then from that, our next step was then to kind of talk a little bit more about the mission of the district, and, and what would be represented in that mission would be the core values of the district, those kinds of non-negotiables that we saw as the things that we would never veer from as it, as it related to our decision-making. So, so I, I just, I put back into the presentation the vision, vision and the mission, because I think everyone has agreed that they, they have served us well, and they really, they really undergird our decision-making, and that is what, providing the best possible educational experience we can for all students. Again, just to take you back a little bit, the, the, the plan centered on eight goals that the school district defined, that we, where we wanted to be at the end of the five years of, of the strategic plan. And we linked those goals to the, the teacher and administrator standards of the new educator evaluation system. So again, going back a little bit to two thousand ten, eleven, we saw on the horizon the new educator evaluation system coming down the line, and it was important for us to link the work of the district's strategic plan to the goals of educators and administrators. The three big rocks, I know you all remember that phrase from Kathy Willis, the big rocks, and that little graphic represents, you know, kind of the, the three overarching strategy areas of the plan. And they remain, teaching and learning, student services, and technology integration. Just a very, very quick aside, when Nick O'Connell did his presentation tonight, he talked to you about the meeting that he had with me today. So I think you're all aware that on the, on the day of every school committee meeting, I meet with the student representatives of the school committee. Today, we started our goals development work, and it was really, it was really interesting in that meeting that I, I spoke with them about the district's strategic plan, and kind of went through what I'm going through with you now. And they saw a great sense of value in the strategic areas of, of teaching and learning, student support services, and technology integration relating to them. It was nice to see from a student perspective that it had, it had value and it had meaning to them. It was a nice conversation that we had today. And I think you're going to see that those strategy areas are going to continue into our, our next five-year plan as well. So again, I'm not going to read every slide to you, but just to call attention to the highlights under the teaching and learning strategy, work around curriculum, work around staffing, and about using data to improve student learning. I think one of the, one of the key points I would want to highlight on, on this slide is that in, obviously, the work of, of alignment of curriculum continues. That's, that's an ever-evolving, an ever-evolving item. We hired a good number of staff this year for, I think, the first time in a long time. We really increased our staffing to deal with the issues around maintaining reasonable class sizes, and we, we instituted data team leaders at each of our schools this year. And I think, in the summer, really, going forward into September now, in the new school year, so we're looking to do a lot more with the data available to us and using that to, to improve student, student learning outcomes. Student support services, again, you know, I think this has a, a number of tentacles to it that are important, and the first objective is really about looking at in-district programming that meets the needs of all students. Certainly, that, that's the overarching objective, is we're trying to do the best for all students, giving them the, the supports that they need to do their best work, but there's also a financial benefit to that when we bring programs in-house. We continue to look at a professional development model that supports the implementation of a comprehensive instructional model in all of our schools, and to create a consistent instructional process that focuses on student learning to measure individual student progress. Again, a lot of the data work that we do is going to supply the information that we need to achieve, achieve these objectives. And then lastly, in the technology integration, I'm going to speak to you a little bit later in my supplementary report, but I'm very happy that we were able to secure a digital learning coordinator, the restructuring of our technology staff that took place last spring and into the summer, with the, with the hiring of digital learning specialists and digital learning power professionals, I think is going to go a long way in us being able to meet the, the, what I think are the very key objectives of the technology integration strategy. I'll talk a little bit more about that as part of this presentation, too. So again, I think there was an importance in, in drawing connections. So as I look at the school committee goals, and having gone through that process with you really for the second time, because when, when I was becoming the superintendent and Kathy Willis was still here, you might remember she invited me to part, to be a part of your goals development for the last school year. So having gone through that again for the second time, I think, you know, it's very good to see that the school committee's alignment of goals with, with the strategic plan remains a focus area. We've, we've asked our principals to work with their school councils to develop school improvement plan goals that align with NRPS two thousand sixteen. Certainly, the budget goals in the past and what you just took a look at tonight, support the work of the strategic plan. And we're, we're doing some interesting work in the next strategic plan that I'll talk to you about in a later slide with NR, NRPS two thousand twenty-one, and how we're going to look to, to elevate alignment of educator goals with the district's strategic plan. Again, I just put up, the ultimate goal is elevating student achievement. That's why we're doing what we do. So I want to just let you know that, that the administrators, and, and for those of you that were at our opening day presentation to the faculty on, on September eighth, I talked to you about the administrator retreat, and we did that again this year for two days in July. These are some pictures where everybody's looking happy and, and without a shirt and tie on and a collared shirt, and just, you know, looking, looking in the summer mode, to do their, rolling up their sleeves and doing their good work around reviewing, revising, and implementing the strategies around NRPS two thousand sixteen, and then advancing the strategic plan for another five years. I think it's important for you to be aware of where I think the focus will be in the coming year, again, under now the three overarching strategies. So in teaching and learning, this is where our focus is going to be now for the coming year. So while what I've talked to up, up to this point has been a little bit historic, I think now we get into, you know, these are, these are the focus areas that we need to complete in order for us to feel as though we've, we've kind of lived by NRPS two thousand sixteen to the highest degree. So we're implementing year three of the educator evaluation model. We continue to work around establishing district-determined measures and common assessments across all grade levels. We are still in kind of that, that area of not knowing what the next generation testing is going to be, but whatever it is going to be, we will be using, you know, our resources to make sure that we implement that effectively. I spoke a little bit more about the data teams. I'm very thrilled about the data team leaders. We have one at each school, people that are going to be designated data team leaders to take a look at student assessment data and, and use that to make informed decisions about curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Obviously, staffing, you talked a little bit about that under your budget goals, but I think, you know, we need to be consciously looking at the staffing that we need in order to support effective teaching and learning. And the curriculum leadership model, something that's been a part of our discussions at budget time every year for the last several years, remains a, a priority area under the teaching and learning strategy. So again, those are the six items that we're going to be taking a hard look at in this current school year, year five of NRPS two thousand sixteen. In our technology integration, technology support staff, we've already achieved some area, some issues in that area that I think are important, that I spoke to a moment ago with the digital learning coordinator, digital learning specialists. We were able to secure a second library media specialist to work at the middle high school. Our new digital learning coordinator is going to be charged with, with enhancing the internet safety curriculum and the information literacy plan, among other things. The large capital plan proposal you saw in the presentation that Michael made to you tonight, again, seeking to up, update our computer and hardware capacity at all levels. And also on that plan was improving the wireless infrastructure at our elementary schools. And we have a, a great deal of technology in all of our schools. Certainly, this building is rife with technology and the need for professional development. How do we use these, these tools effectively on a daily basis remains a priority area in the technology integration strategy. In student services, we're going to be taking a, a hard look at interest, in-district social, emotional, and behavior programs, the Rethinking Equity and Teaching for English Language Learners Program, or RETEL as it's known, another unfunded mandate that we're being asked to adhere to, professional development for the co-teaching model, and also with our power professionals. I had some very good dialogue last year with members of the Power Professional Union around enhancing professional development offerings for them. It was a very good and constructive, positive series of conversations, and we're looking at some things to, to provide those folks with, with, you know, better professional development that serves their varied needs depending upon their role as a power professional. And then lastly is the district-wide tiered intervention models. What strategies can we implement at the, at the kind of the early stages in a child's development to, to deal with any issues that we may anticipate, and that will help them to, to do their very best work by providing the necessary supports? So again, focus areas for two thousand fifteen, sixteen, in the three major strategy areas, teaching and learning, student support services, and technology integration. So our next steps, soon we're going to have test results from the spring two thousand and fifteen MCAS and PARK tests. We will be taking a good, solid look at those, and we have a presentation that will be made to you shortly on the, on the data from those tests. We would be working at our target areas for improvement, you know, whatever that might be derived from the test results that we receive, to implement all of the year five initiatives under NRPS two thousand sixteen. Again, I can't emphasize enough that I think that plan, because it was. Again, I can't emphasize enough that I think that plan, because it was so painstakingly developed with the involvement of so many people, has really become, you know, near-biblical, I think, in our conversations around the work that we do. I mean, we look to that document continuously and, and our, our decisions are derived from it, and it has served us well, I believe. We will continue to use NRPS 2016 to drive our, our budget decisions. And as an earlier slide showed, we would evaluate, revise, and implement the strategies in NRPS 2016 to lead to our new strategic plan, NRPS 2021, which I'd like to take a moment to just talk to you about where we are with respect to that. So also part of the summer retreat, the administrators gathered and started to think about the NRPS 2021, because what we hope to do is go through a similar vetting process as we did with NRPS 2016, with the school committee, with the faculty, across the district, and, and create a document that has great meaning to us and, and also presents some very measurable and achievable goals and we can have in place for the budget development for fiscal year 2017. So I think it's fair to say, and Michael has been a part of this, and I hope he would agree, that we tackled this pretty aggressively in the summer, and we've continued to meet. We have three focus groups, one under each of the three major strategies, and we did some work as small groups last Thursday. We're continuing to meet. We will be meeting again this coming Thursday. And we come together in small work groups to, to kind of advance the, the work of the summer, leading to a framework for NRPS 2021, which I hope to be presenting to you sometime in the early winter for your feedback and commentary before I release it to the faculty. So that's coming. We've, we've been doing some good and early work on that. It's a six-year plan, so something a little bit different. Because we did not have a five, a strategic plan prior to NRPS 2016 that was, with all due respect to everyone that was involved, was really more than just something that was, you know, the proverbial collecting dust on the shelf. But now that we believe we have a good working document that has served us well, what we decided to do was we would create NRPS 2021 as a real six, a six-year plan, but that sixth year would become a year zero, and that's the transition year from year NRPS 2016 to NRPS 2021. So when anyone was to look at NRPS 2021, they would have a one historical year available in the document to show where, where the district had been in that transition year, and they would have that readily available to them in one document. So that's, that's what I mean when I refer to a six-year plan. The rubric at a glance, I touched on this briefly a few moments ago, but I want to call attention to what does that mean? So when, I mentioned it when we were talking about the alignment with the educator goals. The educator evaluation model has a rubric at a glance issued by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for, for teachers, for support personnel like school nurses, psychologists, guidance counselors, such, for superintendents, for administrators. And that rubric at a glance is really, for all intents and purposes, kind of a one-page document that contains the highlights of the standards, elements, and indicators that whoever it is that's being evaluated against the rubric has easily accessible to them to view on a page or two. What we're hoping to do is, and when I say we, it's the administrative councils, part of our work on the development of NRPS 2021, is to take what ultimately is going to be probably a forty-some-odd, maybe fifty-page document and, and kind of boil it all down to a, a rubric at a glance, where we would, we would create a document that would look very similar to what every educator has when they start to look at how they're going to develop their goals based on how they're going to be evaluated by whoever their, their evaluator is. So we're hoping to structure this in such a way that any educator that was to look at it would have, I, I'm going to say, for lack of a better word, an easier time of aligning their goals that they develop as part of their educator evaluation model with the goals of the district through NRPS 2021. The few conversations that some of us have had with folks about that have been very well-received. You know, I think it's, it's, we'd be kidding ourselves if we did not think that sometimes to ask somebody to go through a thirty, forty, fifty-page document, you know, can be, can be tedious at best. So we're looking to have this kind of summary document that will be in a format that we're all kind of used to now through the new educator evaluation model that we can draw off of and then design our own, our own educator goals. And the last thing I would say to you about it is, it's NRPS 21 is, when I do present it to you as a draft to consider, you're going to see a little bit of a change in format in that we've, we've, we've broken down the columns in the, in the horizontal grid to identify and, and I think to a larger degree, draw a little bit more of a highlight to the goal of the work that we hope to do under that particular strategy, teaching and learning, technology integration, our student support services, and then use the initiatives column to be the things that, you know, the steps that we want to take in that particular year to lead us to that goal, which really, in most cases, not all, but in most cases, might be kind of a five-year goal implementation process. In some cases, we may achieve goals in the first year, but there are others that are going, going to be multi-year goals for us. So my, my, my goal for, my goal for you tonight was to let you know that the work of NRPS 2016, in my opinion, and I think others would share it, has been very valuable, has served the district, district well, that we continue to use it as a resource to, to drive our decision-making and to, with the ultimate goal of being, you know, providing our, all of our students, every student in the district, with the best possible educational opportunities that they can have, and also to let you know that early work has begun on the, on the future plan, the successor plan of NRPS 2021. So, Madam Chairman, that's, that's my presentation to you this evening. You're welcome.
If I just have a quick question. You're, you're staying with the three strategy areas?
We are.
Or the six?
That was an early, yeah, that's a good question. I'm glad you asked that, Julie. When we met early in, in the summer and started to talk about NRPS 2021, the success, whatever the successor plan was going to be, there was some discussion around, you know, did we think that these three fit? Did we want to try to add a fourth? But I think we came to the consensus in the end that they, there was still a lot of work that we could be doing, and we decided to go with those three. And we, I think, not that this was a driving factor in the decision, but I think also we thought that there was such great familiarity with them that it made sense.
I've said a, in terms of the, the MCAS results, I know they're out.
Preliminary results are out, yes.
Right. So when will we be getting a report on those?
Yeah, I have, I have it on your schedule of meetings, which I don't have in front of me, but it's, I'm going to say it's, it might be October 19th. I, I can't honestly say to you, but we, we have it on your calendar of meetings that I'm going to ask Patrick to come and do his, his annual presentation.
I know it's much fewer students this year.
I'm sorry?
It's much fewer students than have taken MCAS in the past. It's 10th grade, the 10th grade is the, is the standard.
Ninth and 10th grade, you have ninth grade for the biology.
But I think there's fifth grade.
Correct.
Science and.
Seven.
Seventh or eighth or one of those other.
That's correct.
Okay.
November 2nd.
And I think the, yeah, I think the, is it November 2nd?
I think it would be in October because I thought they were going to wait for the results.
Well, that's Park.
We have, we have the Park one, I think, different, but the, the MCAS analysis report is on, is on, Michael's pulled it up right here, November 2nd.
Parker's results have been pushed back, if I understand, to some time in November, right?
Right, right. So we're going to, we have you on the schedule for MCAS on November 2nd.
I'm hoping that the pushback for Park means that they're going to, the pushback in results maybe means they're going to look at another test.
And by the way, since you brought that, I want to thank Dan for doing a nice job covering that, that letter that we shared with you at the last school, because I thought you did a very nice job.
On the, the letter that Patrick sent, yeah.
Yeah, so.
His head's swollen up.
It was good.
I mean, the.
We also, I sent that out to the faculty on Friday, I think it was, too, and got some feedback on it from teachers, too. So they appreciated, I think, us sharing with them what we had written and submitted and, you know, I think acknowledged the work that they had done to participate in the survey and also, you know, following up with them on it, so it was good.
I mean, I believe the Board of Education is slated to vote prior to.
Prior to the results coming out?
The release.
That's insanity.
That's on their schedule.
Despite Mr. Chester being involved, I just have a funny feeling that they're not going to support Park. Maybe, hopefully, I'm right. I think we did it for a year, as far as I'm concerned. I think just reading Patrick's, that letter, reading between the lines, I don't think it's a test that met what it was supposed to meet, but we shall see.
If we did really well in it, maybe we should reconsider that.
But we won't know.
All right.
We won't know before they pick.
Okay, thank you.
Meeting on to the really fun stuff, the minutes if I could get a motion to accept the September 14th open session.
You know, I'm going to vote in favor, but do you have to note that I arrived at 7:01?
Yeah, who?
I mean, come on!
You could do the same thing for this meeting. I think you arrived at 6:32.
I did.
You did?
I actually did write that. I think someone was.
I'd like that to be reflected in the minutes.
That said, I.
Now, with fairness, I did not write these minutes. I did do the 6:32, I will say.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes from the September 14th meeting.
Thank you.
I mean, once is, you know, could be a mistake, but twice is starting to be a habit.
I know, sorry.
Will you take the mic?
Yeah.
I'm not here.
I do do that earlier.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. Oh, it's just the one, cool. All right, Mr. Conley, would you like to go over the budget?
Great, thank you. So I'm happy to report that we have our first FY '16 September budget report for this current fiscal year. The report is in the same format that it has been in the past, broken down by expenses and payroll information. And I believe the FY '16 budget process is certainly off to a solid start. We were able to meet and even exceed our special education prepayment amount budgeted during the FY '16 budget process as we've had in the past. This will, again, as it has in the past, provide additional level of budget flexibility in fiscal '16. Should we need to do so, it will help address any unanticipated expenses throughout the fiscal FY '16. On the expense side of things, the schools are certainly still in the process of encumbering funds, but many of the, certainly startup supplies, instructional materials, and items needed for the start of school have been ordered and encumbered. We have encumbered all utility expenses at this point in time, and we will certainly be monitoring utility expenses, certainly gas and electricity as we move through this fiscal year closely. It's certainly too early to, to tell whether there'll be funds in this area to sort of re, reapportion, but we'll certainly keep a close eye on it. On the payroll side, again, we've had a very busy summer filling several teacher vacancies. There are several extended leave of absences kind of already, leading to the need to appoint long-term substitutes. This is impacting the substitute budget, certainly somewhat at this time of year, but I will say that's certainly a very, you know, fluid, fluid number that could, could change as we get more information as we move throughout the year. There was a need to, as we have in the past, a couple of summers, to expand some summer hours for pastoral overtime to ensure the new middle school and high school and campus was ready for opening day, and it certainly looked, looked great on, on opening day. The administration line is currently reflecting a surplus. This was the result in the delay of the hiring of the digital learning coordinator, which I'm happy to report. Mr. Bernard will give an update on the staffing agenda item this evening about the digital learning coordinator, but this position has been filled, and that is, has been updated and reflected in, in the projections. But overall, the payroll projections are certainly very close to the budgeted lines, and I think the FY '16, you know, budget process is, is certainly off to, to a solid, solid start. If there's no further questions on the report, as one other item that I do want to discuss under the budget update, that we're going to, to ask for discussion this evening and potentially some action taken by, by the school committee. So any questions on the report presented? Okay. You may recall back last spring and during the budget process, we certainly discussed the substitute daily, you know, per diem rate in the district and potentially the need to increase that rate, and we did some analysis at that time. Certainly, the budget process, as it normally does, got challenging, and we had to set priorities, and, you know, we weren't able to act at, at that time. We wanted to put this item back on the agenda this evening. We, we've included some of the, some of the data, essentially, most of the, most similar data that we included for discussion back last spring in terms of where North Reading falls in its daily per diem substitute rate. And we are, we are seeing that it's becoming unfortunately difficult to fill some, some positions, and particularly the, the last-minute, you know, sit-call positions that do occur. Many of our daily subs that we certainly relied on over the last couple of years have gotten permanent positions, whether it be in North Reading or elsewhere. So our, our pool has been somewhat diluted of, of reliable daily substitutes, and we are finding that at the current rate of $60, because that rate has not been increased for several years, it, we are lagging behind area districts and communities. I don't think this is anything new, but we are finding it difficult to recruit and retrain, and retain a reliable pool of daily substitutes. And we're now seeing, well, the, certainly, it appears it's, it could be becoming increasingly challenging to have high fill rates of our, of our positions, which we certainly, certainly want to maintain. So in your packet this evening was a great, you know, several information of benchmark communities and, and a poll that was done last, last year, which I think is very, in a lot of ways, still current, of all area communities across the state and where they stand. And on the fourth page of that handout, there was a chart. I tried to pull out the, either the DART districts, the K-Band districts, or the, the community, the area surrounding districts. And as you can see in this report, North Reading is among the, the lowest and is certainly lagging behind what appears to be, you know, the new average or the new median is certainly around $70 on a per diem rate. So some of the analysis that was done in the spring, based on the count of, of average per diem sub-days and, and need, was that a $10 increase would be in the range of about a $5,000 cost impact. Currently, we, we pay $60 per diem, and then after, it's actually after 20 days, I'm looking on page three, I know that the chart says 15, it's actually 20 days. After a substitute has substituted 20 days, does not need to be consecutively, our rate goes up to, to $75 per day, and there's only a, you know, there's a handful of about, you know, about eight to 12 subs that do, do meet that 20-day requirement, but that kind of resets at the start of every year. And we monitor that, and once it gets to 20 days, that, that rate for that sub does go up. So this evening, we wanted to really entertain the discussion again of whether we feel there's a need for sort of what we would call a market adjustment to that rate, so we can maybe more aggressively advertise and, and try to start increasing our pool of substitutes. We, we feel essentially a $10 increase from 60 to 70 would put us back into the median or the average or the more competitive rates that, that could certainly allow us to start building back that pool of substitutes in the district. Again, it's, it's a difficult number to project, but we think based on historical information, a $10 increase would be in the range of about a, you know, four, $4,500 to, you know, over $5,000 cost impact. Based on the projections at this point in time, it's certainly, you know, we feel like we could have money to transfer into that line item, you know, given the prepayments and the so forth that we've, we've exceeded and the fact that we, you know, start in the year in pretty solid, solid financial standing. So I wanted to just entertain the, the discussion this evening.
I'm, I'm a little confused. You're, you're reflecting a $5,400 increase in the current expenditure to increase this from 60 to 70 dollars?
Correct. That would be about the cost impact.
For the year.
For the year.
For the fiscal year.
Correct.
How do we only have 540 per diem days for the, for the entire year? So that doesn't sound right. I mean, that would average out to only three days.
Three per day.
Three per day for the entire school district.
So.
Our overall budget for subs is close to $300,000.
That's a lot of long-term subs.
That includes long-term?
A lot of long-term subs.
But even this, I mean, so you're talking, you're saying there's only three per day?
Well, remember, the high school uses staffing internally for most of theirs.
Okay.
And then you, keep in mind the chart below, you know, eventually we go to that 75 rate.
Yeah.
So we're not looking to touch the $75 rate, which is 506.
Okay.
on the average.
Okay.
So, we are in that three per day, you know, range of, of the sixty dollar rate, based on the data we did pull.
So, just a question to clarify, you're not looking to up the consecutive day?
Correct.
Okay.
We think, I mean, we did talk about that last year, and this would be the impact, but I think what we really want to do right now is, is be able to, to kind of market us as, as a more competitive rate and start to increase that pool of subs that would, we can pull from daily.
I support it. I think we're, we're way too low at sixty dollars.
Yes.
Also, I don't think there's been a change. I don't know if there's been a change inside.
Well, I mean, I've talked to some mothers in town that have historically been subs, and they can go to other districts and make more money.
We're finding that too.
I think it's caught up to us in a sense.
Right.
We've, we've tried to hang on, and I think we're, we're seeing it, it's, it's caught, we're kind of at that time where it's caught up to us.
Unfortunately, I, I don't, I'm not sure, but I don't think we can vote on this tonight because it wasn't on the agenda, right?
Right.
We can't vote on an item, I don't believe, that is not on the, we can discuss it, but I don't know if we can take a vote or not tonight.
You can put it on again for Monday.
Put it on for the Monday night.
Right.
I just, just to make sure.
I don't know that we were necessarily looking for that from you tonight.
No, but I'm just saying, but I, I...
I think the consensus is it should go up.
Yeah. I mean, tonight, we wanted to raise the issue again under, you know, the budget update seemed like the appropriate time, and just say, this is what we're seeing, we're a month into the school.
We have the money to absorb this.
I think we do, yeah, based on what I'm seeing right now, I think we do.
I would recommend we go up to sixty-one dollars.
I think if you look at the chart, we are woefully out of step.
Two other towns that are...
One pays fifty, I don't know who they're getting for subs, but, I mean, we are way low.
I think Melrose might be the only one in the area that's like, maybe might be lower than us, and I don't know if they're...
If we go up to seventy, we're right in the ballpark.
Seventy puts us in a competitive place, yeah.
Competitive place.
We agree.
If they want to drive to another town for five dollars a day, they, good luck to them.
Sagus is fifty-three.
I saw that.
I saw that.
Yeah. So, Sagus and Melrose are really...
Would you like this on the agenda for the fifth or the nineteenth?
Well, when do you need it?
If you wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind doing it on the fifth, okay.
Okay.
I'll put it on the agenda for Monday.
And this would be effective, the vote?
Excuse me?
This would be effective, the vote, right?
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Bernard, would you like to do the staffing, please?
I would, thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm very pleased to formally inform all of you that we have hired a digital learning coordinator, Dr. Daniel Downs. He will, he will begin his work here in North Reading on Monday, October the fifth. So, quite honestly, and I'll speak for Dr. Daley as well, you know, we were, we were becoming concerned that, you know, we had not drawn a pool of applicants over the summer that we had hoped, but Dr. Downs emerged. He had, he had applied for the position last year, re-expressed his interest, and we brought him in a couple of weeks ago, had a very good interview with him. Patrick started, I, I then joined and got some outstanding references from the former superintendent in Andover, who, who recently retired, as well as the, the high school principal, and those are the two references I checked, and Patrick checked a couple, and we were very impressed, and I'm, I'm looking very forward to his, his beginning, his work next week. And I'm intending to invite him to the October nineteenth meeting, depending upon his availability, to be introduced to all of you and for you to, to meet and to hear a little bit from him. So, I think that's good news, and it really, I think, puts us in a very good position to, to do some good work around the effort that we had, had undertaken with your support last spring and the restructuring of our technology department. So, I, I think Patrick would say to you, if he were here, that we're very excited about, about Dan coming on board and joining us, so.
I think it's great, because we now have Michael Downs, Daniel Downs, or you oldsters.
Yes.
Hugh Downs will be next, the former host of Concentration, I believe, wasn't he?
I think Hugh Downs is dead.
Is he dead? Oh, sorry.
Twenty-twenty, too, wasn't he?
Twenty-twenty.
That's what I remember from twenty-twenty.
That's right.
Well, Mel State someone watches those game shows.
Exactly.
We did actually joke with him, we were just glad he wasn't named Michael, because we have a lot of Michaels around here. No offense, Michael.
That's great news.
I think he'll be a nice fit for us, I really do. I'm very optimistic.
Johnny, you said the fifth of October?
Sorry?
Sorry?
Yes, he'll start next Monday.
Excellent.
So, thank you.
Onto bids and donations. If I could get a motion to accept with gratitude, three defibrillators, yeah, I can't say that.
Defibrillators.
For the middle school for Mr. Michael Callahan.
I move to accept with gratitude, three defibrillators for the middle school for Mr. Michael Callahan. Value of the donation is estimated to be fifty-one hundred and twenty dollars.
Second?
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, could I just offer a comment before you, but I just, I, I really want to acknowledge Michael, I hope you don't mind, but he, Michael Callahan, I think this brings the total to ten defibrillators that he and his family have donated to the district. And so, he's been extremely generous, and it's very much appreciated.
I did not realize that.
Yeah.
Do we have them in every school?
We do have defibrillators in every school. They have not all come from the donation, but yes, we do.
Any further comments?
No, I'd just say that Michael's sister, Kristen, was a member of the Class II thousand, I think I mentioned this last year, but on the first day of school, I think it was, in her senior year, she had unexpectedly, I think, of a, a heart-related problem, and so Michael's been very, very active in raising money.
Very, very nice.
And making donations, so we really appreciate it.
With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. I could also get a motion to accept with gratitude, a new laminator and the necessary supplies for the Batch Elder School donated by the Batch School Parent Organization.
Move to accept the Batch Elder School Parent Organization donating a laminating machine and the supplies that cost two thousand dollars.
Second?
Any further discussion?
That's with gratitude, by the way.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, thank you. And the last one, if I could get a motion to accept with gratitude, the four forty-one from the North Reading Touchdown Club.
Motion to accept that the school committee accept with gratitude, four hundred and forty-one dollars from the North Reading Touchdown Club towards the purchase of football jerseys.
Second?
Thank you. Any further discussion? None, motion, or all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, thank you. And on to subcommittee updates. See if you guys know how I love to talk so much. Mr. Benessier, Mr. Bowers, would you like to give the update of anything further above from what Mr. Benessier?
I don't have much to add, to be honest with you.
The evaluation subcommittee.
We met on twenty-first, and we kind of discussed our plan for handing out information to you. I believe our plan is October nineteenth, that we will be giving you the information in a small presentation.
That'll be for John's first, first official review. We've, those of us, I think the four of us have been through it already with Kathleen, because she piloted the...
Educator evaluation.
Yeah, the administrator evaluation, so, and then once you get the information back to us, we will compile it, et cetera.
Perfect. The finance planning team, Mr. Webster?
I already mentioned the issue about the little school. I think the, the good news was, we had a lot more free cash than we had anticipated, one point seven million dollars. I believe a lot of it is going to be applied toward the anticipated deficit we always have every year with the snow and ice budget, but it was good to see that one point seven million dollar figure. I think that was the key. We talked, talked about the timeline for the budget, which is in sync with our timeline that Michael had developed. I don't think, were there anything else, anything else, John, Michael, that you can?
I went through the town meeting articles.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time going through the town meeting warrant, yeah.
Yeah. So, that, I think that kind of wraps it up.
And the athletic subcommittee, which met on this...
You have any notes?
You know what, I took a lot of notes, and I left them in my office, but we had a fairly lengthy agenda.
Why don't you start, and I'll fill in what you might miss? Because I don't have my notes.
I, I think the, the main focus of the meeting was trying to put together an ad hoc committee for the purposes of raising money for a turf field. So, we talked about that extensively, and I think we actually came up with a committee membership that we're trying to pull together to start a fundraising drive for the turf field. I don't know, John, if you planned on talking about this tonight, but the Savings Bank, is a, is a Savings Bank of Linfield?
Yes, the Savings Bank.
The Savings Bank, they have a branch in North Reading, and they've donated ten thousand dollars.
In fact, they were taking a picture today, they were here today, too.
Yeah.
To get it started.
They've donated ten thousand dollars, and I think John's gonna do a more formal presentation at the next meeting or whatever. But as kickoff, as seed money for the turf field, so we're trying to see if we can get some momentum to begin raising funds. It's our position, and we've talked about this extensively, that to get a second practice field, which is part of the building project, that's going to be usable, we're talking about probably two thousand and seventeen, probably in the...
Into the grass.
Grass field. A grass field, I might add, that doesn't, at this point in time, even have irrigation as part of the plan. We desperately need the additional practice space. I don't think it's uncommon now, when you look at other districts, to see them adding additional fields, because the, over a long period of time, that makes sense.
Absolutely.
There's, there's limited maintenance, maximum use, and the way we've expanded our athletic program, we desperately need additional practice facilities. So, that was a major part of it, and again, I think, I think we're gonna try to have a committee meeting of this ad hoc committee that we put together, and see if we can get a strategy, a marketing strategy, and, and see if we can begin some fundraising. We also talked about the long-term situation at the turf field regarding bathroom facilities. Presently, we have, I believe, John, it's a one-year waiver...
Correct.
...to use porta-potties for the facility, the turf field facility. We do have bathrooms in the team rooms, but those are strictly for the teams that are participating and using the field. We talked about the participation rate for the athletics for the fall, and the numbers are up over the last two years, and they were high the last two years. I think we're up in the three forty something.
I think there's fifteen to twenty more, ten, somewhere between ten and twenty more participants.
Which is really great, I mean, you know...
It's huge.
Yeah, it was, I think it was twenty, from three twenty to about three forty-one.
Three forty-one, so, that's great participation rate. What else, Mel, go ahead.
Well, we did talk about the team building is being used by football, soccer, they're using it for storage. We've, I think, two of the pods are almost completely empty.
Correct.
We're paying for those pods on a monthly basis, so we're gonna be getting rid of those.
We think that will be right at the end of this week, by the way.
Right. We did talk about a plan to get rid of those. Youth football is using some of the storage area for their football equipment. It's big, we get two, that storage area is a lot bigger than I think we ever imagined. I know that, I've talked to Athletic Director Dave Johnson, and he has some ideas of if we could put shelving in that, in those storage areas, we would, could actually store more.
It was, Mel, John, and I were at the football game last Friday night, a week ago, Friday, I guess.
Right.
And, and the entire football team, fifty-five players and all the coaches...
At halftime.
Fit into, at halftime, fit into the team room.
Yeah.
So, it was great.
Yeah.
They were inside, they were, had the whiteboard in there, and it was, really worked out well.
Yep.
It was standing room only.
It was.
It was, but they all fit in there.
They all fit in.
They all fit in there.
The one thing on the restroom facilities, we did talk about, I don't know if it's the next me, next meeting, but at a near future meeting, having the building inspector come in and meet with us, so we can...
Tell us what the clients...
Yeah, what, what are we going to have to do there? Because that, we're gonna have to address that issue. You know, maybe we could go for a waiver for another year, but that issue is going to have to be addressed in terms of having restroom facilities.
So, just to clarify, so the porta-potties are not, that, that's not part of our plan? We're getting waivers every year?
The porta-potties are part of a waiver.
We have a one-year waiver.
They're part of...
So, here's why we had to get the waiver. When, when the old high school was there, it was close enough, so people attending games, et cetera, could use the restrooms at the high school.
Sure.
Now, the high school's up on the hill, there's been some talk, maybe the batch is close enough. I think that's a stretch, and I think the building inspector has said it's probably not close enough. So, porta-potties are not, from what we've heard, we haven't heard this directly, are not seen as a, a long-term permanent solution.
Okay.
Which means there's gonna be a cost.
But we don't, we don't yet know what would be an acceptable long-term solution. We're hoping to know that soon.
I mean, the good news is, we have, we have, the plumbing is down there, the pipes are down there...
Septic system.
The septic, the wastewater treatment plant is there, so all of that stuff is in place, so that would help us in terms of a lot of potential costs moving forward.
Pump, pumping is probably adequate.
Yes.
The wastewater treatment plant is very adequate.
Right, exactly.
So, the, the, the issue really is a, a building...
Structure. Right.
And then, an outrageous number of fixtures.
And that's what we, I think, we're pretty sure we can get a waiver on that outrageous number, so that's the issue.
Is a, is a big issue.
Right, that's the issue, right.
That's the reason why the team building have...
Right, right.
It's because we didn't know it was like forty-four bathrooms.
Well, we had all kinds of information. It wasn't part of the, the building project plan. So, again, I think we need to get the accurate information as to what we're going to need, and then we've had different ideas as to how we're gonna address it. But that's gonna be some, part of the athletic subcommittee's ongoing agenda is to...
There's two other, two other things. The good news was, we heard that the wrestling co-op team with Linfield had been reapproved for two more years. There was concern that they were not going to approve that, and we were gonna have to go our separate ways, and Linfield may not even have had enough wrestlers to have a team this year. We, North Reading now has more wrestlers than Linfield does.
I think ten or twelve years ago, we, we didn't have enough interest, so we lost our program for several years. And then I think, I forget who the athletic director was.
Roy Condon.
It was Roy Condon, yeah. We started a co-op, not a co-op, but a joint program with Linfield, and it's been very, very, very successful.
And we're gonna have the same coach coming back.
Great coach, great coach. Coach is not a threatening guy. And Craig Stone, and he's...
He's back, at least for the upcoming season.
Yeah, he's done a great job with the team.
And then the one, the one other issue we discussed was the, it was an interesting batting cage proposal for softball and baseball. I believe that the baseball coaches and Dave Johnson are gonna get details in terms of pricing and what's possible. Hopefully, that'll come through with the next, at our next meeting or the meeting after that.
The spring, spring use.
Right, we need to have that ready by, we need to have that in by, by February, March, so kids can start using it to practice for, for baseball.
Yeah.
In softball. So, it was a very lengthy meeting, and we covered a lot of ground.
And again, there will be a picture, I think, of the paper, if not this week, next week, of the, the Savings Bank making the donation.
Yes, Mr. Torres was here today, right?
Very generous, yeah.
Yeah. I think we'll be asking you to accept that at a future meeting, where we got the check today, so. got the check today, so.
Very good.
I went to the NORCAM meeting.
Oh, you did?
You did.
Do you want to report?
Yes.
There's only so much I can say. Really, the, I, while at the meeting, I communicated with Cliff, and we were still looking to try to get a, a camera mounted in the gymnasium.
Yep.
I think the cost, Cliff, was estimated to be around twenty-five thousand dollars. So we went back to NORCAM, and as, I think, as everybody knows by now, this room is equipped with robotic cameras. The gym and the performing arts center are not, I believe, correct me again if I'm wrong, the infrastructure is in the gymnasium.
I believe that's true, yes.
So that we're looking for the equipment at this point in time. The infrastructure is not in the performing arts center. That cost was excessive at this point in time, and we need to look at that in the future. Make a long story shot, I requested that they consider, again, supplying the camera and the equipment we would need in the gymnasium to be able to film the volleyball, basketball, et cetera. And the answer was, they took a vote, and the answer was no. Unanimously, they voted against it. Their concerns are that we address the entire project at one time, which would mean having the money or coming up with the money for the performing arts center. And it doesn't appear to me that they're willing to make that kind of a contribution at this time, so.
No, their initial contribution was going to be approximately a hundred thousand for the cameras and the equipment that they use up there for, for broadcasting. I guess, I'm, I guess I understand in one way, but I don't understand, since we have the infrastructure, why they wouldn't put a camera in the gym. The infrastructure's there.
If you were at the meeting.
I was on the...
You would not say, "You understand." You would say, "I don't understand," but that's...
I mean, I understand the disappointment in that they can't put them in the auditorium because I'm disappointed also, but that's a hundred thousand dollar cost that we don't have the money to put the infrastructure in there right now.
And I explained that. I explained that. I, I think there's been a, a communication problem.
Yeah.
Probably more between the SSBC and the NORCAM board than anything else, because we have gone back and forth with this over the last, really, two years.
I think that all of that has been clear and, and explained to them the difficulty in, in finding the hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And we just don't have it. And I guess it's a matter of whether they wish to add the camera and serve the community or not.
That's right, Cliff. That, that sums it up better than I did, and quite frankly, I explained that, you know.
It's a matter of, you know, just, just that. You want to serve the community or not.
So at this point, there will be no camera put in the gym?
No, not unless we find another...
Hundred thousand or so for the auditorium.
Well, or we can find the money to put the camera in the gym ourselves, you know.
That's true.
Yeah.
Well, if they're not putting it in, they're probably not going to operate it.
They might not operate.
We're not going to get on the air anyway.
But he, but the thing is, if, if they put it in, they're likely not going to operate it anyway because their requirements in terms of broadcasting are for public meetings, school committee, selectmen, town meeting, I think are the three main...
That's correct.
Meetings that they're obligated to cover, either live or on tape, if they can't cover, not on tape, but recorded, if they can't cover them live. If, if, if we, I don't think we have any money right now, but I would not be adverse to looking into what it would cost to put one of these robotic cameras in there with, with a remote control, because they're not going to do that filming anyway. We'd have to have students doing that.
I'd love to see a student program where they're, they're broadcasting the games and they're filming the games like...
Masco does that.
Yes, they do.
We have a studio, and we have ability...
I would think it would be great. I think it would be great, great, you know, to put on the regular broadcast, so people could watch it. And I think it would be good for the kids to learn how to do something like this.
So, Mr. Superintendent, what I would ask, not a formal, not, not to get a formal bid, but could you discuss with Mr. Daley and maybe the new technology?
Digital learning coordinator?
Digital learning coordinator about this issue and what it might cost to get a camp. First, first, we can find out tomorrow at the SSBC if the infrastructure is definitely in there to put a camera on the wall. And if it is, find out what the cost would be to get one of these types of cameras here and up on the wall, and then we can broadcast. And, and I think the idea of having students do it is excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I think at one time I looked up the cost of the cameras and, you know, appropriate equipment, and it was not excessive.
No.
Okay.
No. So I think that's something we should look into. Again, not to say, "Let's go spend the money," but let's, let's get an idea of what it would cost.
That's it.
All right. Upcoming meetings, the subcommittee's scheduled. There is a secondary school building committee meeting tomorrow here at the Distance Learning Lab at five thirty P.M., an athletics subcommittee on October twentieth at twelve thirty, and Jerry gets to go back to NORCAM on October twenty-second at seven P.M. And the finance planning team meets October twenty-third, which is Friday, at eight fifteen A.M. And with that, Superintendent Bernard, the administrative report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a couple of things to, to share with you. So it was mentioned earlier briefly about the little school roof restoration project. I think I, you know, tried to update you along the way about the project, and I think what I'd like to share with you tonight is that tomorrow, Michael and I are expected to receive a report with cost estimates for the project, and that is coming from what was some pretty extensive testing that took place last week at the school. There were a number, number of people on site late Monday and into Tuesday conducting all sorts of testing of the, of the site and, and trying to prepare the most comprehensive report that they could. So we're expecting to get that report sometime late tomorrow electronically. And then on Thursday morning, Michael and I are hosting a meeting at seven thirty with several people, including the project manager, Jeff D'Amico, and hopefully a representative of the engineering firm that did the, the architectural study, so, as well as some town officials. We've invited the town administrator, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, finance committee chair, and the finance director for the town. We hope that they, they will be here. I expect that they will. You know, as we've said all along, that, you know, that it's a moving target. You know, we, we, we worked off of information that we had from a, a company that Wayne Hardika has used before for roof work, and, you know, that information got us into the accelerated repair program because if you remember, there was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar minimum threshold that projects must fall beyond, so to speak, in order to become eligible. And so, and if you remember further, we had, had three estimates, depending upon the scope of the project we wanted to undertake. And so that information, I think, was preliminary information and has been used as a sort of a baseline. But I think it's fair to say that, you know, we're looking at some potentially extended work, if you will, to be done based on the preliminary information we have. So we're looking forward to receiving that report, having, you know, having a figure to consider as early as Thursday with the town administrator and the other folks that I mentioned, and, and then preparing a presentation for town meeting on, on Monday the fifth. So that's the latest, the latest news on the, on the little school roof restoration project. It was mentioned earlier, Nick O'Connell did a nice job, I think, of highlighting the ribbon cutting ceremony. But the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new middle school for the community is on Wednesday evening at six thirty. So we have a nice program slated for that. We have some student performances, choral performances, some guest speakers. I'm hoping for a good turnout, a nice program set to officially commemorate the new North Reading Middle School, followed by a ceremonial ribbon cutting with the, with the big scissors and all. So it should be fun. I'm looking forward to that. And you had earlier accepted as a committee a donation from, from Mr. Michael Prisco and his family for the flagpole that was installed on Friday outside, right over here to our right. And it really looks spectacular. It, it's a beautiful addition, I think, to this campus. It was an extremely generous donation of Mr. Prisco and his family, and I think it begs another acknowledgement tonight. And I just wanted to show you, too, that along with the flags that came with the pole, Mr. Prisco donated two nice banners for us to use, for the high school to use as we see fit, you know, to, you know, suggestions were, you know, on the day of a game, there may be a, you know, a place that we can hang. So he gave us two of these. Jason, you got that? I think they're just really nice. They're nice, high-quality banners and, you know...
Excellent.
That I think we'll do a nice job to, again, just, you know, kind of bring a sense of pride. And the flagpole, really, to watch it go up all last week, really, was, was pretty, pretty, pretty neat. And I think it just, it looks, it looks fantastic, and it was a very generous and nice addition.
If you haven't noticed it yet, take a, take a look at it. It's, and one of those banners is actually flying on right now.
There's a flag.
So he's got the, he's got the flag, and there's a North Reading flag underneath that, that's up there.
Looks great.
Just in case we succeed from the union or...
Is it lighted yet? Will it be lighted?
It's not yet.
But it will, right?
I think that his plan is to move forward.
They're working on, they're working on trying to get some type of a solar lighting system, I believe. But I think if there's a light on it, it'll be spectacular.
Yeah.
But it's a huge flagpole. It's a very generous donation by Mike.
I think it's sixty-five feet.
Fifty-five feet, yeah.
Sixty-five.
I think it's sixty-five, you told me, yeah. It's, it's really nice.
It's beautiful.
Looks great from Park Street.
It really does.
It does. It's a great, very generous donation.
It was. It was. And then last thing, it's not on my report, but I thought that, you know, just again, in the spirit of, you know, so many people had so many nice things to say about the, the campus, that as, you know, we're kind of on the other end of things now as a school with a beautiful new campus, that I've been asked by two communities to come and tour the building. They're, they're entertaining building projects in their communities, much like we did back a couple of years ago, looking at Beverly. I remember going to Beverly, Douglas, Tewksbury, and, and seeing what folks had done. So I hosted some folks from, from Andover back a week ago Wednesday, and then from Sogas this past Wednesday. And again, I think people just, you know, as I did when I went into Tewksbury High School or Beverly High School, just walked around, you know, with that look on my face that probably said, "Boy, you know, can we really have something like this?" And so it's nice to be able to show it off a little bit and to, and to hear such nice feedback on, on